Okay, all right, members of council, we do have quorum, we're past the designated hour. Welcome, as the summer weather continues into this fine week, welcome back, hoping everyone's been healthy and happy through the summer. Welcome to senior management team and staff, members of the media, and guests who are here today to present. This is the general issues committee meeting of September 7, 2016, calling the meeting to order officially. Members of the public are advised, our meetings are webcast live by the city of Hamilton, temporarily archived on our website. Other individuals and media may also be audibly and/or visually recording the meeting, as well a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function. I'll repeat that, as well, a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during committee meetings, so there won't be any bing bing bings. Thank you very much, members of committee, for your cooperation. Changes to the agenda are guiding hand, Stephanie Paparella.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we have one added delegation request from Jeff Valentin, United Way Burlington and Greater Hamilton, respecting the city of Hamilton, United Way kickoff on September 22. This will be for the September 21 GIC. As well, there are two added notices of motion, proposed extension of outdoor swimming pool hours and free admission to all public swims during the summer season. And the second one is with respect to opportunity to host the rendezvous 2017 Canadian Waters Tall Ship Regatta, 10 tall ships on Canada Day 2017.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. With that in hand, members of committee, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Counselor Pearson, Counselor Pasuda, all in favor? Any opposed? Everyone will get a chance, motion carried, thank you. Any declarations of interest to avoid conflicts? Counselor Farr.
Just quickly, I spoke with you offline, and for the record, the William Thomas 10:00 press conference, where we reveal this exciting new design and mature student living, is at 10, and I want to be there for that, I've been invited by our friends at Leuna. They're also making a very significant investment and announcement on that investment in the immediate vicinity at the same time, and so I'd also like to be there for the unveiling of that very special announcement for downtown Hamilton today, and by extension, the rest of this great, big, beautiful city. I do have also a very important priority in being here and asking a few questions of our good delegate today with respect to their issues with the neighbor around John and Rebecca, and I'm hopeful that we can, and they've agreed, if we can put off their delegation, if I'm not going to be here for that 20 minutes to 30 minute period between 10 and 10:30, I would very much appreciate it if you would allow them to speak upon my return at your earliest convenience, Mister Chair, and of course, we only have quorum now, and so all of what I just said is mute, if we only maintain nine, because quorum is a priority, of course.
Okay, sounds like a plan, Counselor Farr, instead of rushing them now, with you rushing out in a few minutes, with committee's concurrence, we'll put off the Rebecca-John Park proposal until Counselor Farr returns. All right, I have a nodding of heads, thank you, Counselor Farr, and the delegation understands that, we'll have a full discussion upon your presentation, good. Approval of the minutes of August the 8th, a motion to approve that. Counselor Collins, Counselor Skelly, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. The special minutes of August 23rd, a motion to approve that. Counselor Green, Counselor Conley, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, members of committee, through the delegation request, 4.1, Laura Ryan from the SPRC wants to speak about the Kiwanis Boys and Girls Club, and that would be for the September 21 meeting. What is your desire? Counselor Marula, Counselor Green, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. 4.2, Stephanie Vey and Lita Berry about the Arts Council for the September 21 meeting as a delegation. Counselor Skelly, wish to move that? Okay, seconded by Counselor Farr, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. 4.3, Patrick Birmingham regarding picnic on a bridge, and that would be Stephanie for today's meeting. All in, Counselor Collins, Counselor Green, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. 4.4, the Vanier Cup, Glenn Grunwald and Graham Brown want to appear at the October meeting of GIC. Moved by Counselor Farr, seconded by Counselor Green. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Welcome, Counselor Brenda Johnson. 4.5, Elizabeth McGuire, Basic Income, wants to appear at the September 21 GIC. What's committee's pleasure? Moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Pasuda. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. 4.6, the distinguished John Hall, coordinator of RAP and the implementation team, wants to appear at a November meeting of GIC. Committee's pleasure, moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. And the added one today, Jeff Valentin of the United Way wishes to appear on September 21. Committee's pleasure, moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Conley. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. We continue to have quorum, wonderful, as Counselor Farr has departed for a few minutes. Consent items, members of committee, 5.1, information report on the relocation of the hall. What is the pleasure of committee? Move, receive, received at this time? Counselor Green, Counselor Pearson, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. And the added one today, Jeff Valentin of the United Way wishes to appear on September 21. Committee's pleasure, moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Conley. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. We continue to have quorum, wonderful, as Counselor Farr has departed for a few minutes. Consent items, members of committee, 5.1, information report on the relocation of the hall. What is the pleasure of committee? Move, receive, received at this time? Counselor Green, Counselor Pearson, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. 5.2, concession BIA adding a member. Counselor Skelly, would you like to move that? Seconded by Counselor Collins, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. So now, we're on to public hearings and delegations, Stephanie, we're going to hold off on the Rebecca-John Park till Counselor Farr returns. Patrick Birmingham, is Patrick in the audience today? Patrick, wonderful. Come on down, please, and welcome to GIC. Seen some of your correspondence via emails, and you're here regarding your feasibility proposal for picnic on the TB McQueston High Level Bridge, working in concert with Ward 1 Counselor Aiden Johnson. So the next five minutes, Dale, the floor is yours, and if your presentation goes longer, I'm in the hands of committee if they wish to extend your time. Welcome.
Thank you, Mister Deputy Mayor. Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, this morning you have before you a proposal, perhaps of an unusual nature, to close the McQueston High Level Bridge to traffic and to open it for the public, in honor of both the very beautiful place that we live, and also to celebrate our 150th anniversary. Our mission is to celebrate the clean, green and beautiful city that we love. It's quite easy to imagine a photograph of people having dinner on the bridge with Coots Paradise in the background, many people will ask, where in the world is that? And of course, the answer would be Hamilton. We'd like to create awareness of the value of conservation and give a voice to nature, and also to people like McQueston who had the vision to preserve that particular part of Hamilton many, many years ago. We'd like to also attract families, businesses and visionaries to become part of our future and our community. Basically, have fun, meet our neighbors at a once in a lifetime event, but penultimately, to raise money for the Coots to Escarpment Initiative, ideally to be able to raise money for land acquisition, and our goal is to raise over a million dollars. Now, this is not a new idea, it's a great idea. It's done in Paris annually, and that's where the idea of wearing white clothing came about, because it doesn't matter whether you wear a tee shirt or you wear a work shirt, but for photographic reasons, in Paris, everyone wears white, we can do whatever we want in Hamilton. Columbia, South Carolina closes its bridge to raise money for conservation and canoeing activities for youth. And Sacramento does the same thing. We've now noticed in the press that Ottawa's jumped on the bandwagon, and they're planning to close the bridge between Ottawa and Gatineau, and in fact, they're going to sod the entire bridge with grass, so that people can picnic on the grass, on the bridge, which I think is a bit superfluous, but nevertheless, Ottawa is chasing after us. Now, this is more than just a dinner on a bridge, it's a bridge to our community, and our programming includes both music for the evening, an opening ceremony, hopefully created and put on by our First Nations members, it includes an open art competition, so there'll be a photographic competition, painting competition, for works that are inspired by the view from the McQueston Bridge. For many, many years, this has been a popular meeting place, for thousands of years, and of course, it is the gateway to Hamilton, so I think it's a very suitable place to have a picnic, to celebrate what we have at our own backyard. I didn't know it at first, but in fact, the logo for the city of Hamilton is a stylized version of the bridge, representing our communities and the bridges between ourselves. Now, furthermore, we haven't yet formally invited the mayor of Burlington, but what we envision, because the C2E initiative involves 10 agencies, specifically Burlington and the Halton Conservation Area, it's a great opportunity for Hamilton and Burlington to get together and have dinner together. We don't often have that much in common, but we certainly have conservation in common, and we certainly have the bay in common, so it's an opportunity to have Hamilton, have dinner with Burlington on the bridge. And I'd like that invitation ideally to come from the city or from the mayor's office. Now, if you can imagine an arrival by canoe from Coots Paradise, people will come from both the RBG side and also from Princess Point, people will come by boat from Sercoa and from the yacht club, will lay on a waterfront shuttler, taxi, people will come by bike along the waterfront trail, by foot, and of course, by bus. And train from Toronto will lay on a special go train, or arranged with go transit to have a car to bring people to the new station, and then shuttle them to the bridge, and of course, some people will come by car. But the arrival is not just to the bridge, but in fact, a great opportunity to come and visit Dundern Castle, which we all love, but we don't see it every day. It's also an excellent opportunity to visit the newly renovated Rock Garden at the RBG. And it's also just a great time to come and take in the view and enjoy the place that we love. Now, dinner, originally I had envisioned that we would just have a picnic, we'd provide tables and chairs, and everyone bring their own picnic, but very quickly, I was confronted by people from Pop-Up Hamilton and said, this is a great opportunity to showcase all the new culinary skills we have in the Hamilton region, and so therefore, we're looking at a mixed bag of both bring your own picnic, or elect to have a gourmet dinner. It's really very much up to the participant. The bridge will be open to the public throughout the day, people can come from probably noon or 1 o'clock onwards, visit, bring their own picnic, or elect to have a more formal dinner. These are some of our numbers for our budget. For a fully catered dinner with wine from the region, it would be expensive, but I think worthwhile for a one-time event. So we estimate to raise 195,000 from ticket sales, and sponsorships 155, a total budget of 350. Our estimated costs are 200,000 for running the event, and our objective is to have the event pay for all the ancillary costs of closing the bridge, having security, traffic diversions and so on, but more importantly, we want to use this event to be a focal point for conservation, and to raise a million dollars for the Coots to Escarpment Initiative. Today is the most important date, where I'm presenting to you. Following potential approval from city council, we would issue a press release in September the 15th, begin an advertising campaign September 25th, and tickets would go on sale at the beginning of October. Now, the first full moon in June is June 9, and our proposal has been shifted from that full moon to the Sunday, which I think is far more appropriate and practical to have a Sunday dinner on the High Level Bridge. People that are supporting are you yourselves, City of Hamilton, we have an official endorsement from the Coots to Escarpment Initiative, a letter of support from the Ministry of Transportation who are on board, and I know the Minister of Transportation quite well, I think that he'll be supportive of this, of closing the bridge for this occasion. We have the Joint Stewardship Council have reached out to, and they would like to create an opening ceremony for us. Pop-Up Hamilton will organize and marshal the various chefs, we have Muse Marketing on board, and CBC Canada has been a supporter. Thank you for your consideration. If anyone doesn't recognize this image, I hope everyone does, it's Governor Simcoe's wife's painting of Coots Paradise 220 years ago, and pretty much, the view hasn't changed one bit.
Patrick, excellent presentation, and a really terrific pictorial handled as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, happy to answer any questions if there may be.
Terrific. For Mister Birmingham, questions or comments of our delegation, starting with Counselor Green, please.
Thank you very much, and sorry, we were trying to figure out maybe some of the logistics on this side of the table with regards to your request and your timelines. Through you, Mister Chair, typically, it's my understanding, we would have this kind of referred to staff, and then they would report back, just to make sure there aren't any hiccups. I'm just wondering if I could, Mister Deputy Mayor, and I don't know who would be the appropriate person, but if you could, maybe to Chris Murray, just to ask, just while he's here, so there's that understanding.
Okay, then, so I'll tie that in with information item 8.1, then I'll allow some latitude with that, if you want to ask staff, because right after, it will tie in with 8.1, Counselor Green.
You know, I'm going to do you one better, I'm going to wait and hold that question, so you don't have to make an exception for me.
All right, then, thank you, just to the presenter at this time.
Just to the presenter, so just so that you know as a comment, typically, that's how things happen, what you'll hear after your presentation has been received is how that might work out, but in the event that we do have to refer it, will your timelines be dramatically impacted if we have to bring this back to another GIC a little bit later in the month?
Well, no, it's not going to stop the party from happening, we'd like to start selling tickets as soon as possible, once we have the green light, but I fully anticipate there may be one iteration, we may have some questions to answer, council, and we're more than prepared to do that promptly.
Outstanding, and so any, just a preliminary question, any idea what we're going to have on the menu?
Well, we're going to have probably a lot of Canadiana, so Canadian meats, things that are both wild and domestic, we're going to have obviously Ontario wines, but I think that we might have venison, we might have game as well as domestic food, and I think we'll have a lot of green vegetables grown in Ontario. It'll be a very all-Ontario menu.
So we've got a local menu, great cause, I know Counselor Aiden Johnson's been working on the Coots to Paradise the Escarpment Project, and I'm not sure, he's held up a little bit, I'm sure if he was here, he would be really excited about this motion, and probably quoting some obscure English writer appropriate for the time, but given that he's not here, maybe council can consider, hope waiting up for him to come back, to be able to present whatever motions he has attached to this particular file.
Okay, hold it, everyone. I haven't been deputy mayor for a while, give me a chance here, please, I appreciate all the suggestions and recommendations. Counselor Green, I got some other speakers for the presenter, we've got 8.1, and maybe hopefully Counselor Aiden Johnson may appear in time.
Thank you very much, Mister Deputy Mayor, and any relationship to Anne and the other Berminghans that are here?
Yes, she's my sister.
Of course, love the name Birmingham Solutions, you brought a great project, and I look forward to breaking bread with you on the bridge, hopefully.
Thank you, Counselor Green, Counselor Collins, please.
My questions were around the logistics as well, I think this is an amazing idea and proposal, so certainly willing to support it, I just didn't, I don't know, from the time that Counselor Johnson presented the motion in June to today's date, what discussions have occurred with city staff, and in those discussions, are there any hiccups or hurdles to overcome, because it seems like you've covered all the bases in terms of cost, I know that you're fully aware of the approvals that are needed in terms of the police and everything else, so within, in the discussions that have occurred over the summer months, is there anything left to do other than getting council approval today, and I know this is on as 8.1, and I can certainly ask staff this thing.
The only thing left to do is, we have to make a formal approach to the city of Burlington, to Burlington Transit specifically, to notify them, but at the same time notifying the mayor of Burlington that he's invited to come, please have dinner with us. We haven't sent an invitation to the Prime Minister's office yet, we've held off to following this meeting, but obviously, Justin will be invited and his family. We have, we will allow for one lane to be open for emergency traffic, it's a very good idea, we had always envisioned we'd have emergency access. It's our vision that the bridge may be closed for either 24 hours or a minimum 12 hours. I think from the point of view of doing traffic diversions, it's as easy to do 24-hour hours as it is to do 12, so the bridge will be closed from 6:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the morning the following day, give us time to set up whatever we need to do, and we've shifted the date to Sunday, which I think is a great idea, much more accessible for people, and Bridgette gave us a lot of good input, and it's all helped to formulate a better event.
Okay, so 8.1 that's on the agenda today is information report, there are no recommendations attached to it, so have you discussed with staff the opportunity today to have something passed to give direction, or was there an understanding that it's too late to pass something? What's your understanding, Mister Birmingham, through you, Mister Chairman, in terms of...
It's fuzzy, my understanding of the process of today's council meeting is fuzzy, but I don't know if it's possible to move forward to right away, perhaps Ms. Bradford can answer.
How about when we get to 8.1, Counselor, which will be right after we finish with Patrick?
I'll hold my question until then, and I just wanted to thank Mister Birmingham for investing his own time, energy and resources into getting us to where we are today, so very worthwhile and very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Collins, and we've just been advised by the clerk, Counselor Aiden Johnson probably won't be here till around 11-ish, so I'm in the hands of committee while we do with 8.1 afterwards. Counselor Partridge, please, and welcome to committee, Judy.
Yes, and thank you, Mister Deputy Mayor, you have things well in hand, as usual, I appreciate that. Patrick, thank you for your presentation, and definitely put me down for a ticket. I don't know if you're aware or not, but we do have a Hamilton-Burlington Liaison Committee that is co-chaired by myself and Counselor Craven, and Mayor Goldring and Mayor Eisenberger sit on that with us, along with senior staff, and we meet a few times a year, we have a meeting coming up, I believe later in September, October, so I'll make sure that this is on the agenda.
But please invite him personally.
Yeah, absolutely, as an information item. I'm just, most of my questions have been included in 8.1, most of the answers, I should say, but the one question I had was around parking at the RBG, and I'm just wondering if you've spoken with the RBG, if they have any events going on at that time, if there'd be any kind of a conflict.
There may very well, but we haven't made an approach to the RBG yet, we wanted to speak to you, to city council first, and then subsequently, we'd like to use all the parking in the vicinity, both the Rock Garden parking, RBG parking, the Sercoa and the dock is a good parking spot, as well as Princess Point, so we plan to have as many cars parked off-site as possible, obviously, Dundern has parking as well, and we hope that truly a lot of people will come by bike and by foot.
And thank you for that, because I'm also thinking Bayfront Park would be a nice walk along the walkway, and then up the stairs, and you're right there, so I appreciate that. And Mister Chairman, the only question I would have, then, was just a confirmation and a clarification, that you're not looking for any money from the city, and there would be no cost to taxpayers that you anticipate at this time, is that correct?
Great question, we are going to incorporate the dinner on the bridge as a corporation, we'll take out the insurance, and we'll pay, take all the financial risks associated with it. You're simply invited.
All right, and you know what, and I'm delighted, and delighted that it's for the Coots to the Escarpment Project as well, I've been working on that, along with Counselor Aiden Johnson, and Counselor Arlene Vanderbeek has also been involved, with Counselor Craven, MPP Eleanor McMahon has been instrumental in moving this forward, as has MPP Ted McMecon, so great cause, and I thank you so much for coming forward today. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Partridge, no other questioners of the presenter, so move to receive officially, Mister Birmingham, Counselor Pearson, Counselor Brenda Johnson, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Patrick. Stick around, we're going to segue right into the information report from staff. So, members of committee, for those of you that just arrived a little late, 6.1, Rebecca-John Park, Dale Mudford, and the presenters are going to wait till Counselor Farr is back from a ribbon cutting, he should be back within a half hour. So with your indulgence, let's move right into segue into 8.1, the information report. Counselor Green, did you have initially questions of staff, as you had indicated earlier?
I just wondered if maybe, if we were looking to wait, or perhaps go on to 8.2, or, I don't know.
Okay, I'm in the hands of committee if you want to wait respectfully for Counselor Aiden Johnson. All right, so we'll put off 8.1, Patrick, we're going to put off 8.1 until the ward councillor arrives, hopefully within the hour, so I'll let you judge your time accordingly. Okay, that's great, Counselor Green, we'll put that in a state of abeyance for now. 6.1, Dale Mudford is waiting for Counselor Farr, so let's go right on then, Stephanie, to 8.2. Report of the West Harbour Subcommittee, there's three items there, let's do each item there. Item 1 under 8.2, mover, Counselor Partridge, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson, all in favor, carried, and item 2 under there. Counselor Pearson, Counselor Marula, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. That's 8.2. 8.3, the Business Improvement Area, again, we'll do each one in case there's any comments or objection. Item 1 under 8.3, moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Pasuda, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Item 2, Counselor Partridge, under the BIA Advisory.
Yes, I just have a question on the overall report.
Okay, this is the time.
Okay, thank you. So if I may, to staff, on the Business Improvement Area, the Water Down BIA has been without an executive director for a couple of months now, we're in the final stages this week of interviewing and hiring, and my question, Mister Chairman, is, are these reports circulated to the boards of director? Because I'm questioning, just without an executive director and no one to forward this to at the ED level, would this report go to the overall board?
Carlo, do you want to come to the microphone, please? Carlo Gorni, our coordinator of all the BIAs.
Good morning, Carlo.
Through the chair, good morning, councillor.
Nice and loud, Carlo, please.
Okay. Could you please repeat the question?
So my question is, and I can't see if your microphone is on, Carlo, but my question is, with the, in the absence of the Water Down BIA having an executive director in place, are the minutes that are in front of us now, are they circulated to the boards of directors?
Through the chair, the minutes of each BIA Advisory Committee meeting is in fact, yes, are circulated as part of the next agenda to each of the BIAs through the Clerk's Department.
But does it go to the Board of Director? I'm just saying that we do not have an executive director, so I'm not sure, I just would like clarification on the process, so would the overall habia minutes be sent to the board in the absence of an executive director?
Carlo, through the chair, the minutes of each BIA Advisory Committee are emailed to the BIA itself as an entity. My understanding from conversations that I have had with the treasurer of the Water Down BIA, Mister Gary Tidley, is that information is being received at their end, and if there's another way that they would like to receive that information, we could certainly look into that as well.
No, that's fine, I just wanted clarification that it is actually in the absence of an ED, which we hope to have in place within the next week or so, so thank you, Carlo, thank you, Mister Chairman, appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Partridge, our chair of the BIAC, Counselor Green.
Thank you very much, one you don't want to read out, you just want to spell that one out, it's a good one.
I love acronyms, carry on.
No, it's important. So I just wanted to flag for everybody, and in doing so, bring to our attention item number 1, which is a conversation that's been going on for quite some time, just in case it was missed, I just want to flag it for consideration, the 2017 budget, is that we're, there's been a very long conversation around the BIA Advisory Committees around service-level agreements, so finding ways that there could be equalization between the BIAs for the different types of services that are offered, because as we've discovered, there are huge discrepancies from one BIA to the next regarding some of the perks and services they get from the city, and so this is something that I think BIAs representing nine or 10 of the wards in the city will be coming forward in the 2017 budget for consideration, and I think it's important on two fronts, one, I believe that it's something that needs to be... But does it go to the board of director? I'm just saying that we do not have an executive director.
Right.
So I'm not sure, I just would like clarification on the process. So would the overall habia minutes be sent to the board in the absence of an executive director?
Carlo, through the chair. The minutes of each BIA advisory committee are emailed to the BIA itself as an entity.
Right.
My understanding from conversations that I have had with the treasurer of the Waterdown BIA, Mr. Gary Tidley.
Right.
Is that information is being received.
Terrific.
At their end. And if there's another way that they would like to receive that information, we could certainly look into that as well.
No, that's fine. I just wanted clarification that it is actually in the absence of an ED, which we hope to have in place within the next week or so. So thank you, Carlo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you, councillor Partridge. Our chair of the BIAC, councillor Green.
Thank you very much. One you don't want to read out, you just want to spell that one out. It's a good one.
I love acronyms. Carry on.
Yes, no, it's important. So I just wanted to flag for everybody, and in doing so, bring to our attention item number one, which is a conversation that's been going on for quite some time, just in case it was missed, I just want to flag it.
Okay.
For consideration, the 2017 budget, is that we're, there's been a very long conversation around the BIA advisory committees around service-level agreements. So finding ways that there could be equalization between the BIAs for the different types of services that are offered, because as we've discovered, there are huge discrepancies from one BIA to the next regarding some of the perks and services they get from the city. And so this is something that I think BIAs representing nine or 10 of the wards in the city will be coming forward in the 2017 budget for consideration. And I think it's important on two fronts. One, I believe that it's something that needs to be addressed, to create that equity inequality among all BIAs, all corridors, retail corridors across the city, commercial corridors. And two, even if for some reason we can't find the latitude to accommodate that, that we note that in the 2017 conversation, to look at just how vast that discrepancy is. And I know Peter Wabshon and his crew have looked at the formulas that are used for equalization, that have to do with tax levies and everything else. So it's about equity, it's not about equality, it's not saying that everybody's going to have exactly the same. It's just, and we're not trying to bring anybody down in terms of what they're getting. What we're trying to do is raise all of our retail corridor sectors up. And so I wanted to flag that, so it's not a surprise for anybody in 2017, as we approve this, that that is part of the considerations, as noted in item number one of this report. Just don't want anybody to be surprised, or, you know, think that we snuck one by anybody.
Thank you very much, councillor Green. So item one of report 8.3 was approved, but thank you for the background you provide us. Item two of this report, moved by councillor Partridge, seconded by councillor Pearson, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. And item three, moved by councillor Whitehead, seconded by councillor Skelly, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item 8.4, regarding the Hamilton Walk of Fame, committee's pleasure, moved by councillor Marula, seconded by councillor Whitehead. Question councillor Whitehead? Welcome, Terry, to the committee.
Thank you. I want to thank, actually, I don't know where councillor Marula was, maybe he was unavailable, but I want to make sure he understands that I was, I did an interview on the Walk of Fame at CHML, and I put a lot of the kudos for councillor Marula's foresight. And this is really about an opportunity to create role models in our community, a sense of pride, a sense of ownership. And it is recognizing contributions in entertainment, science, medical innovation. And it is overdue, and you can see that other cities are going in this direction as well. So I really appreciate the fact that we're going down this walkway. And I know that the challenge will be this pathway. I know the challenge will be, quite frankly, the determining the location for this walkway. I know that, I'm hoping that we ensure we consult with all the stakeholders. I hope that the planning and Chris Murray also understands that there are other documents coming forward that may change a little bit of shape of our downtown in the future, and that is part of that consideration. I know that we're expecting a report to come forward soon, with the potential of looking, at least having a discussion on the convention center and those kinds of things. So I want to make sure that we don't lose sight that the downtown may shift a bit, and that should be part of that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. Councillor Skelly, and then back to the mover of the motion. Councillor Skelly, please.
Thank you. Through the chair, and this is to Ken, if Ken is around.
Yes, he is, right there. There's Ken.
Oh, there you are, sorry. Good morning, Ken. Just out of curiosity, what kind of response are you getting so far? Do you think this is well-received in the community, in the arts community?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Nice and loud, please, Ken.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At the moment, we haven't done a lot of consultation yet. We are, this report is asking for permission to go and do that. There already are other Gallery of Distinction and other organizations doing this. We've talked to them, they seem interested in it, and supportive of the entertainments, focusing on the entertainment side of it, but to date, we don't really have a wide response.
Thank you. Through the chair, is it possible, Ken, do you think, and through the report, you mentioned a number of other examples, is it possible to do this through community-led initiatives, or is the city going to have to take the reins and move forward?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I really don't know at this point. The other ones are larger cities, larger communities, and more, Toronto specifically seems very entertainment industry-driven. So we will see what comes back from members of the community here.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, councillor Skelly. Councillor Marula, who moved the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank councillor Whitehead for recognizing that I've moved this initiative, but I'm just curious as to why CHML would call him and not me, was really the question, but I haven't said that. I'm glad that councillor Whitehead mentioned that. On another front, I did, I was honored to actually trip over Eugene Levy at a Blue Jays game, and I did go out of my way to talk to him about this particular issue, him and his wife. Interestingly enough, the first thing he said to me after I mentioned it was, "So you're the one?", which led to some anxiety around people around him, thinking that he was angry at me. But in good humor, he was actually very pleased about it, was anticipating a response from us, and he did mention that Martin Short also contacted him about the issue. So his wife, Martin Short, was referenced, and Eugene Levy were very pleased by this initiative, and as Hamiltonians, we should be very proud of that fact. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marula. No other questioners, comments? Moved by councillor Marula, seconded by councillor Whitehead, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. 8.5, Ontario's 150 Anniversary Funding Program Committee, what's your pleasure? Moved by councillor Pearson, seconded by councillor Partridge, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. 8.6, the Port Authority Liaise Committee, moved by councillor, who was that, Brenda Johnson, seconded by councillor Green. Any questions or comments on the Port Authority Liaise Committee? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. So we might as well go, we're still waiting for councillor Farr and the Rebecca John proposal. Oh, I was remiss, I should recognize the new general manager of Public Works attending his first standing committee meeting, Dan McKinnon. Dan, congratulations. Okay, well, why don't we go right into motions, then? Item 9.1, digital inclusion. Councillor Green, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I know perhaps, perhaps I was a little bit cute with my preamble. Certainly, for those that have been paying attention to the news, they're seeing the craze that has been altered reality, which is the kind of new frontier for electronics with this Pokemon Go. And I was amazed to see how many people accessing Gage Park. I think it's before you, I'm sorry, I could read it. I apologize. Thank you, councillor Pearson, I should read it, and then...
Yes, why don't you read it out for the public as well, public consumption, councillor?
I've had it out there for so long, I just got real comfortable. Whereas the wild Pikachus have been spotted in Gage Park, and whereas Pokemon trainers from far and wide have been gathering at Gage Park in their quest to catch them all, while enjoying one of the southern Ontario's best urban green spaces, and whereas our vision is to be the best place to raise a child and age successfully, and our priorities are community engagement and participation, healthy and safe communities, built environment and infrastructure in order to provide innovative, well-maintained public spaces that serve as places for community activity, and whereas Hamilton was ranked in the top 21 in the world by the Intelligent Communities Forum, of which digital inclusion, including access to public Wi-Fi, is noted as an area necessary to reduce the digital divide. And whereas the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board has introduced iPads in classrooms as part of their broader initiative to introduce Wi-Fi into public schools, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to review the feasibility of installing public Wi-Fi as a pilot in Gage Park to be funded directly from the ward-specific non-property tax revenues in Ward 3's account, the Bell Mobility cellphone tower revenues, and report back to GIC.
Your secondaire, please.
Councillor Sam Marula.
Thank you, carry on.
And on the motion, again, and now you can see why I was being a little bit cute with the whereas, as I did mention the Pokemon Go craze, what that has done is kind of signified, I think, a shift in how we are interacting with each other and consuming information. Mr. Deputy Mayor, we are shifting out of a knowledge economy. We are shifting into an information economy, where access to information really is integral for learning, lifelong learning. We're seeing that in our schools with the introduction of iPads. However, as noted, I think even by our delegate today on an unrelated issue, Mr. Dale Mugford, that if we don't act in this city, we will be in a digital deficit by 2018, in terms of what we offer our public with access to Wi-Fi and broadband here in the city of Hamilton. You know that early I took an interest on the Intelligent Communities Forum, which has resulted in an elevated committee, the mayor's task force on intelligent communities. I did travel to Columbus, and what I realized in Columbus is that municipalities far and wide, both big and small, and in particular the small ones, are doing some incredibly innovative things to offer broadband and Wi-Fi access to their populations, from bus stops and bus terminals to parks. We already have it at our recreation centers, in our libraries, and all this does is take an inside space realm and turn it into our public outside space. And if I could just take a second to address some of the concerns and comments, this is not driven by a video game. This is driven by digital equity and equality. The kids that have been issued, by and large, all these iPads, were given these iPads with the assumption that everybody has internet access at home. That is actually not the case, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I could tell you specifically in my ward, that there are children in the same classrooms, one of whom will go home with a report or a project to do online, that has access and one that doesn't. And unfortunately, we're in a space where our libraries and our public amenities that offer Wi-Fi don't have necessarily hours of operation and access on Barton Street and our library there on Barton Street, and some of our other rec centers. So what this does is offer in the public realm, free Wi-Fi as a pilot project. This is also a feasibility study. So I will, I will hear from some people, or I have heard from some people, that this is something that we tried previously and failed. But those who understand technology know that every year, the access becomes less expensive, and the technology becomes much better. So here's an opportunity to use non-property tax-related money to invest in a pilot project for us to see as municipality how this might work citywide eventually. And I look to some of my rural councillors, who I've spoken to, and if I could, you know, talk about conversations I've had with councillor Partridge and others out in the rural areas, where this also might be in the future, a way to provide broadband access to our outlying communities that might not have some of the intercity access. So not only is it an economic equity, but it could be a geographic equity in the future, and one that I'm willing to certainly invest in here in Ward 3. As I close, Mr. Deputy Mayor, an email went out requesting for the inclusion of our very own Hamilton Utilities Corporation looking at being involved in this. Because we are in this very specific field of technology, I believe that we should have an open conversation throughout the industry to find out who's got the best proposal on the table, to offer the municipality the best value. I could foresee, perhaps, hopefully, our own utility company, which is in this space, HEC, coming forward with a great proposal like everybody else, and hopefully offering a very competitive bid. But in the preliminary stages, I think it's very important that we have an understanding of the true market capital costs and operating costs, so that we can test the feasibility of this in other facilities or other parks across the city. So I'm fully available for any questions. It's something that I've thought through, it's something I campaigned on early in Ward 3, and it's something I'm excited to hopefully offer as an opportunity to the people there in our community. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and members of council for your consideration.
Thank you, councillor Green. So you'd like your motion to stand as is?
Correct.
Okay, and seconded by councillor Marula. Councillor Skelly, next, please.
Thank you. This is more of a comment than a question, but I will support the motion, mainly because I believe that the councillor has a right to spend the ward-specific non-property tax revenues as he sees fit. But when I was first elected, I visited a number of schools, elementary and high schools, and the common theme by the councillors and the principals was the level, unprecedented level of stress that our teenagers, our pre-teens are facing because of social media and because of technology. They are bombarded 24/7 with messages from peers, from friends, from people they don't know, they are bullied. And I think it's important for us as community leaders and as parents to recognize, they also need a chance to unplug and to get away from technology. And it may sound crazy in this day and age, when we all rely on, I don't think there's a person in this room that doesn't have their cellphone on right now, but they need to be given an opportunity to really unplug, and what better place than a park? I do believe the councillor, when he says, "This city has to move forward with smart technology", but I think that that's a different type of direction and a different type of issue. We're talking about increasing broadband access for companies, so that we can bring in more companies to create better jobs, better high-paying jobs, technology. We need to invest in broadband. But to suggest that our kids need technology in our parks, I don't know, I think they also need a place just to be kids. I will support you on this motion, but I think it's very important that we recognize that they also need a chance to unplug and to be kids. And on the last point, you mentioned Columbus, Ohio. I just wanted to bring up the point that Columbus, Ohio, which I believe is deemed the smartest city in North America, was given that distinction, has just rejected LRT. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Skelly. Councillor, councillor Whitehead, please.
Thank you. In fact, they're going to autonomous buses, is an interesting case study. The, this is, feels like Groundhog Day, because some of you would remember when I did a white paper and we initiated the hotspots, and the Fredrickson had hotspots for wireless, free wireless. Philadelphia went through a mesh system and provided initiative to provide wireless right across the whole city of Philadelphia. And certainly here in Hamilton, we initiated a wireless program for downtown around the convention center. The problem was the technology back then, and we had the reports, it was costly, and it was site. So it had to be site-directed, so if you're inside of a building, you couldn't receive it, you had to be out in the open in Gore Park, or, and there were some challenges maintaining it. The other problem is, is that the annualized, monthly costs are still there. Now, in Philadelphia, the telecom companies actually launched a lawsuit against Philadelphia, and were successful. And Philadelphia had to give it up to the telecom, the service of the telecom companies at a cost. So I would be concerned, two things, I don't necessarily want, like public health, I don't want to have an ad hoc have and have-nots in the community. I think the philosophy is good. Are we prepared, are the taxpayers prepared to pay? Because I know that this pilot program may work in one area, because there may be some revenue they can tap into on an annualized basis, but that may not be the case with the balance of this community, and therefore, you're setting yourself up where there's going to be have and have-nots in regards to this type of access. It concerns me, because we just had a discussion about equity. And to me, equity is throughout the whole community. And if you don't have a funding model that provides an annualized financial basis to fund this type of program throughout the city, then we have a problem. So the concept I accept, the problem is, is that I'm having a challenge understanding doing it in an ad hoc way, because that type of funding isn't necessarily sustainable, and certainly not sustainable for the greater community. So if we're going to go this direction, then I think the feasibility should be broader in regards to how and where the funds could come from, and what sites across the city might be considered to provide those services. So I'm okay with the concept. It's just, if we really truly believe we're one city, then let's truly look at equity, and let's truly understand the financial model that can make this program a success, and not just in one particular location. I do believe that, and I still strongly believe, that the downtown is, and I, you know, when you talk about parks, I like to see this, so when tourists come into our community and people come to our conventions, they can sit at a cafe, or one of the pubs or restaurants and access free wireless and have a good experience and come back, and talk about the good experience they have in Hamilton. So there's an economic piece to it. So I like to sort of broaden the concept, not just about our youth, but it really is about economic development. And I think it is a tool that, if used right, could attract and give Hamilton a very good and strong image. So those are my comments as we move forward, that we have a sustainable funding program if we agree with the concept. The question is, where are the best locations? What would we achieve? And how could we fund it in a sustainable way moving forward? Thank you.
No, there was, there was no personal reference at all. Councillor Whitehead, thank you very much for your speech and comments. Councillor Marula, please. I've got you second time, then councillor Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And firstly, I think we do need to applaud councillor Whitehead. The downtown initiative really was before its time, and I do recall councillor Whitehead spearheading that. Secondly, councillor Collins, to his credit, did move that we have Wi-Fi at rec centers and arenas, which we already do. At that time, we never incorporated the parks. This is a natural progression that we should be pursuing, and I'd like to see it citywide, that every park basically have free Wi-Fi. Having said that...
Having said that, I think this can be used as a pilot. I think it's unfair that it's being paid for though through a ward budget as opposed to a general levy impact because frankly, the information that we obtained from the study is going to be applied citywide. So I'm prepared to have it, have it funded from the general levy rather than the ward specific budget, if I do get support for that. And lastly, I think it would be foolhardy not to, to realize that this really is the future. I don't think we're going to be reversing the need for smartphones or free Wi-Fi. And I could see a time when it'll be free throughout the entire city and something that I think we should be in consideration mode presently because ultimately, inevitably, it will happen. And I think where we did go wrong on councillor Whitehead's initiative was not upgrading our, the capital end of that investment as, as we progressed or as the technology progressed. Because had we done that, we'd have a good base or foundation to work from, which we no longer do from the core perspective, but we do from a rec center and arenas perspective as a result of councillor Collins' initiative. So I think we need to put this in perspective and I think the future is pursuing this type of initiative. And for that reason, I, I believe that this information that we obtained from this and the fact that it will have city implications should be funded by the general levy and not the ward specific budget. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marula. Councillor Partridge, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Yes, and I too will support this, but I have to agree, I'd like to see it on more of a citywide feasibility study, but including the rural areas. And as the good councillor from Ward Three indicated, we have been in conversation, we've had discussions about this for, for the last few months. And technology has changed and is changing rapidly. I'm going to give a shout out to certainly good company in Flambeau, Clear Cable is a new company and they, they do this kind of thing and they do it worldwide. It's, it's absolutely incredible how, how technology is changing and continues to change. And I know certainly they are working with the city along with other businesses at improving some of our, our services. But I would like to see, you know, this, and perhaps in some way including here, that the feasibility of having this public Wi-Fi service citywide throughout all of our parks, including the rural areas, be explored and brought back to the general issues committee. I don't know if that would be considered a friendly amendment or if that would be a separate motion needed for that, but, but...
Carry on councillor Partridge, you have the floor.
Thank you, yes, I do.
Your chair is listening intently.
I know you are, sir, as you always do. You're such a good chair. But I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, and that is within the motion, it does speak to a pilot, but it does not speak to the timing of the pilot. And so I just like some clarification around the ward councillor's intent on, on that pilot. Because typically, it's a year, two years, six months. I see this as being, you know, more of a two or three year, but I'd like to hear from the councillor, please.
That's a great point, actually, and, and an oversight on my behalf. I think that, given where this conversation's going, if we did 12 months, then that would give us a basis for making a decision this term in terms of the direction we want to go citywide. And, and I'll wait until I'm second time speaker so I don't...
I did ask for, I did ask for some clarification on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, other than those two issues, and I would like to, Mr. Chairman, hear from Madam Clerk on my question around the friendly amendment to add that in or a separate motion, please, thank you.
Stephanie. Deputy Mayor, my apologies councillor Partridge, I didn't hear what your, what your friendly amendment was.
Okay, so I would like to see whether we could put within this motion that there be a feasibility study on the opportunities and challenges to have this particular public Wi-Fi across citywide public parks, including the rural areas.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, if the councillor is fine with it, it should be moved by motion to add a subsection B?
Subsection B?
I would agree with that. That it do it as a formal amendment, I would agree with that, yes.
Yes, yes, and I'd be, I'm, I think councillor Marula is seconding the overall motion.
Yes, he is.
But I would certainly...
Hold it. Councillor Partridge has the floor.
I do have the floor.
She needs to have somebody else answer her questions, she'll do it through the chair. Councillor Partridge?
I will, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and so Stephanie has, Stephanie has clarified that this would be an item B if we can add that in. And I'm hearing that councillor Marula is willing to second that move by councillor Green. If there's anything in addition to that, I'd be happy to second or third it as well. Thank you.
So councillor Partridge, I'll come back to you after the speakers list for your amendment, seconded by councillor Marula. Okay, fair enough, thank you. Councillor Brenda Johnson, first time speaker.
Yep, thank you. I'm, I'm willing to support this as a pilot project because I, I'm excited actually about pilot projects. The intent is to test the waters, throw something at the wall, see if it sticks. So that's why it's labeled a pilot project, so that's why I'm in full support. If, but I'm not in support of turning this around now and putting it on the general levy because it's to assume the outcome. And that's where I have an issue with this. Usually pilot projects, we find a little pocket of money where we can test the waters and then we can move forward and then it gets turned into a budget item. So I'm not ready to assume anything at this point. I'm willing to support this to see how it goes. Let's find out if, if it's a success or if we have challenges. So I'm not prepared at this time to, to say, let's just put it on the general levy and away we go, it's going to be citywide because we're assuming the outcome. And we can't assume the outcome at this point. So I'm all for supporting the motion as it stands. I, I like the idea of looking at feasibility as well to find out whether or not it will. But again, it will all come out in the pilot project. If it's successful here in this spot, let's, let's now open up the doors. And then it goes on the general levy and then. But if our, our councillor is willing to try this out to see if they test the waters, I'm all for it. Let's go. And I appreciate the initiative. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brenda Johnson. So second time speakers councillor Green and Whitehead. Councillor Green?
Thank you so much, Mr. Deputy Mayor, for, for reining this in. And I certainly appreciate the open-mindedness of everybody. And if there's one thing I learned in my short time, small steps, incremental, feasibility, pilot, general levy. So I, I tried to go in that direction, seeing the big picture and, and I said that in my, in my opening comments, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that I do see this as a citywide initiative. I do see this as being potential for an outside-in approach, particularly as it relates to broadband in our rural areas, providing connectivity. This is not age-specific. I might have put too much emphasis on the fact that these are just kids because that's not the case. In fact, the highest growing populations of people on Facebook are actually seniors. You would be happy to know, Mr. Deputy Mayor, fighting social isolation and other things by getting on and checking in on their grandkids and everything else. So this really is a multi-generational approach that provides access and equity and, and I am open for a citywide feasibility. I just didn't want to have that be the barrier to moving forward at Gage Park. So I think that I'm still willing to support. I think there's a certain poetic justice in using Bell's cellphone tower money to, to fund this project. I'm still, I'm happy to do that, but if we want to go citywide with it and report back and, and do that, let's do that as well. But I would just ask that as a subsection in B, that A can still move forward and then we have B. And if, and if it's, if there's a consideration around the table that, that there is support for including this as a citywide funding model, I would happy to see that be voted on but wouldn't hold it against anybody for voting against. So I really appreciate everybody's open-mindedness. I'm excited about this. It fits into where we need to go as a municipality. It fits into what the private market has been saying, the private sector has been saying for quite some time. Clear Cable, it should be noted, is the Canadian representative for the Intelligent Communities Forum as well. So again, on the cusp and leading edge, they understand the more people that are connected, the better it is for their businesses. And so that's the kind of economy that we want to create here and support. And yeah, this has actually gone quite a lot better than I thought it was going to go, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I'm just going to shut up now and let it hit the floor.
Yeah, because the vote hasn't been taken yet. So thank you councillor Green. Councillor Whitehead, second time speaker.
And I think there's a, there's a fundamental issue here that we need to, and it's not like we haven't gone through this exercise. And I can tell you that Fred Snelling, who's, I believe, still with the city, was one of the leads on it. You have to make a determination if you're going to go hotspot wireless generation or you're going to go to a mesh system. Now, a mesh system would serve the whole community and answers in response to the equity issue. If you go to hotspot, then you'd have to go through site-specific criteria on determining the hotspots. And so the question, why Gage Park? What is the criteria? What, what are we setting forth to determine what is ideal location to set up these hotspots? But the, the infrastructure is key in regards to going one direction or another. And that's the concern I have with the, the pilot without understanding the technology and, and what technology that we're going to utilize. Because if, if we're going to build something that hopefully will be accessible to the real community and the broader community, then the mesh system might be the most equitable approach to take, but it might be the most expensive and we'd have to do that evaluation. So I think the first evaluation is, do we do hotspot approach or do we take a, a mesh approach? And I don't see Fred here, so he won't be able to respond, but I hope that is part of the consideration before going into the pilot because it, because the pilot will be a hotspot. It's not going to be a mesh system. So how do you, how do you quantify success? How do you quantify success even on the hotspot? So when you say the pilot program worked, then what is the measurement? So can I ask that question? What is the definition of success?
Who are you asking that through councillor Whitehead?
Some is, if the pilot's being measured, how, what do you measure?
Would you love the move or the motion or did you want to hear from staff councillor Whitehead? Councillor Green, please.
I'm not clear that we have Fred in the audience today. If I had known in advance, I definitely would have invited him here. I do apologize and understand councillor Whitehead has been deep into this file and has an understanding. I think part of the feasibility is looking at all of those factors. And so my hope is that by referring this to staff, those that are in the know, NIT, who understand this space, private sector people who will probably comment, they're probably commenting right now, live-streamed the public record, they'll be able to give us feedback on what is success. For me, success is moving this feasibility, that's where innovation is, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Innovation is moving into spaces that don't have necessarily quantify quantitative data as we like to hear, qualitative data as we like to hear around this table. Innovation is being in that space, taking the information and then processing it. So for 12 months, we will run this program, non-tax levy, if we want to keep it there, that's fine. I'm happy to support citywide initiatives and invest in citywide vision building. And then when they report back, we'll find out about uptakes, operating costs. We should also find out about other things like, you know, what is the community usage of the space? Because quite frankly, I think Gage Park is an incredible location because what I've seen over the last couple of months, which is a explosion of people being present in the park, and yes, it is for a game, that's where they're at now. But I see it with a much broader application as it relates to connectivity.
Okay. Thank you councillor Green, I appreciate that answer specifically councillor Whitehead's question. Councillor Whitehead, city manager would like to chime in if you'd allow him. City manager?
Through you, chairman. I think in, in undertaking this work, if it's, if it's approved, we have the luxury now of a number of communities having gone down this path. So I would expect that whether it's the Columbus, Ohio's or in fact Dublin, Ohio, suburb of Columbus and others that have well-traveled this path, that we would use their criteria or at least review it to, to bring it back as a method by which we can evaluate whatever program here. So we're not, we're certainly not on the bleeding edge of this. We are, we're, I think, catching up in terms of what other communities have been doing. But we will use what I think probably has been tried and true in other communities for, you know, demonstrating the cost benefit or the value of such a program.
Thank you, city manager. Councillor Whitehead, you still have the floor.
Yeah, so clearly when you're focusing on a park, it's a different dynamic, a different element in regards to the benefits, but I see a much stronger benefit and that's why we targeted downtown originally in regards to the tourism, economic development, investment development, all that stuff. People, when they attend downtown, come to our hotels, you can sit in Gore Park, experience different parts of the downtown and have access to the internet. And I see it as an economic development, an experience tool. So that you can measure and get feedback from. I'm not sure how you do it in a, in a park. I don't want to lose the sight of not only is this a qualitative issue in regards to a community neighborhood experience, but there's also an economic benefit in going in this direction, which what I, which the area that I was focusing on, I don't want to lose sight of the, the fact that the downtown is an employment hub, it is a tourism pump, it is where convention center is, it is where Cops Call CM is, it is where our healthcare centers are, that this is an ideal location. Believe it or not, it's coming from councillor Whitehead, but I firmly believe this, that that moving towards a wireless system to mesh our downtown would be, in my opinion, one of the number one priorities for economic, to facilitate economic development. So I don't want to lose sight of that because, you know, there's a qualitative, I want the quantitative in regards to understanding, and this is the feedback we had years ago from the BIAs, from, from the Tourism Board, from, from economic development. And, and because of the, the antiquated type of technology we're using then and the cost to upgrade it, it was line-of-sight type technology and technology, as you know, has, has changed dramatically. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that there, this actually starts another discussion that's very important. And that is, how can we utilize this vehicle, this tool, to enhance the experience downtown for many people to come here?
City manager, summary comment, please.
Sure, if I can, that's you, chairman. You're touching on actually an important aspect of what is going to be in your economic development strategy coming forward. So I, I don't disagree with you at all on the importance of broadband in this community. And I think it was mentioned earlier, absolutely the downtown and waterfront is critical, other parks in our community. But we've heard clearly from the conference in, in Columbus about the importance of broadband in the rural area. In terms of supporting businesses in the rural area, that is no small matter either. So what you will likely be seeing in Neil Levison's Economic Development Report will be some specific mention about us having a strategy for broadband and, and making it, you know, actually, as you point out councillor, a key aspect of our economic development strategy. So that is coming. I think that report is going to be here next month. But in the meantime, if we get direction to start down this path, you know, we're happy to, to do that and benefit from what other communities have done.
Thank you, Chris.
And I should, and I should say in conclusion, I am proud of the fact that councillor Green is picking up where we sort of left off and, and sort of had a void in this discussion, but this discussion needs to be had. When you take a look at progressive communities moving forward, you know, God bless if we get LRT or not LRT, but we get it, it'd be nice to have that internet access on, on the, on the train. So having said that, I think it is a, an ability for our community to push forward and stand out. And I want to thank again Matthew Green for reinstituting the dialogue and discussion on this matter.
Thank you councillor Whitehead. Now councillor Marula, second time or was it to second councillor Partridge's amendment? I had you as a second time.
But I also want to bring forward a motion because I believe in principle, if we're going to initiate this for citywide implementation, it should be paid for by the general levy. It would be unfair to allow it to be ward-specific funded when we're, when we're actually studying it for citywide implementation. It just, it would, I would do it for anyone around this table, it's just not a fair or in principle a fair thing to do. Also, I think it changes the variables of the study and might actually increase the cost if we are studying it for citywide implementation, which is even more, which is, compounds the unfairness of it all. Because if it's, if it's specifically related to, to Gage Park, the study would be far more simple than it being a study that will extend it citywide. So we're either going to do this for citywide implementation and pay for it citywide, or we're going to leave it localized for, for Gage Park. Because I'm not sure why Ward Four would have to absorb, or sorry, Ward Three would have to absorb the cost for citywide implementation. So I'm moving that if it's going to be for a citywide study, for citywide implementation, that it be paid for by the general levy and not by award-specific budget and that's seconded by councillor Green.
So councillor Marula, since you and councillor Green, since we're at the point now of voting and within amendment to, to follow, you both moved the Ward Three budget to cover this specific pilot.
And I'm moving to amend it.
You're moving to amend that to be citywide?
That's correct.
Could the chair humbly suggest tying that in with councillor Partridge's amendment?
That makes perfect sense.
To maybe look at that more, the citywide, if it's going to be, it would be part of the levy down the road?
Makes perfect sense.
Thank you councillor Marula.
And that's what I was trying to do when, when it was being presented, was because if, if we're going to move forward just for it to be a pilot project for the East End or for Gage Park, then we leave it as is.
Perfect.
But once we start opening it up to citywide implementation, it needs to be paid for citywide.
Thank you for that cooperation. Okay, second time councillor Johnson and then councillor Partridge, I'll come to you for your amendment. Councillor Johnson?
Okay, first time for this amendment, right?
The amendment's not on the floor yet. Now we're still speaking to the overall report.
Then I'm, I'm confused. I'm so confused. My understanding was that this motion that's in front of us today was to... My understanding was that this motion that's in front of us today was to implement a program for internet in Gage Park, and it's a pilot project. That's what I thought this motion has. So am I to understand now that this is now going to be taken to all the parks in the city, and therefore it should be covered by citywide funds? I understand that part, I just want to understand what's going to happen tomorrow.
So, hold it. So Counselor Johnson, you can vote as-is with what's originally before us, and when Counselor Partridge puts her "citywide," that would be the time you may wish to vote against the citywide initiative?
Okay, so I just want to understand again. My understanding was that it was to look at the feasibility of citywide, and I have no problem with that funding coming out of somewhere else. I have no problem with that, and it shouldn't be on Ward 3. I understand that. But the motion that I read last Friday was to look at Gage Park, let's go, pilot project, let's look at the successes, but nowhere in here did I see that it's going to go citywide. So now we're into the conversation of citywide. The feasibility of citywide, I totally understand, and I'm totally on for that funding coming out of somewhere else. And the Ward, okay, guys, hang on, I'm not done being right. So the Ward budget can pay for Gage Park in the pilot project realm. I get that. But if it's citywide feasibility, let's find the funding for that somewhere else, and that now becomes a totally different amendment. If this is successful, citywide, they find the hotspots, as was discussed earlier, then let's just go citywide, let's put it on the levy, let's go. But this was a pilot project for Gage Park, I'm all on it, and it's coming out of the cell phone towers, I get it. But this is now complicating it for me, and now my understanding is out the window.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Are you concluded then?
I am concluded.
Because we're going to go to hear the amendment. So you're done, Counselor Johnson? You got your comments on the floor?
I have my comments on the floor.
All right, so no other second-time speakers. Counselor Partridge, to your amendment, please, to this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Counselor Johnson is absolutely right, from my perspective, that the only amendment that I'm okay with is certainly putting in an Item B, which is for staff to explore the feasibility, not for it to be funded on the levy. So it's just coming back to GIC to explore the feasibility of citywide Wi-Fi within our parks, including the rural area. That's it. And that wherever Item A, and I'll leave that up to Madam Clerk, because I think if we then start putting in the citywide funding, which maybe we support down the road, it changes the meaning of the motion. Completely changes it, and it changes the amendments, the meaning of, then it does not become a friendly amendment, is my understanding. Could I have some clarification on that, please?
Stephanie, please.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Because it's moved and seconded, it's not a friendly amendment, it's an actual amendment, which is good. But what Counselor Partridge had put through and Counselor Marula had seconded is just a staff review of the feasibility of citywide.
Correct.
And report back.
Correct.
And force staff to report back on the costs associated and where it should be funded from at that time. Subsection A in the existing one, as it stands right now, is for Gage Park only and to be funded from Counselor Green's Ward budget.
I'm as crystal clear as can be, but Counselor Partridge, you still have the floor.
Yes, and thank you. And the only other clarification was that the pilot be for 12 months.
Correct.
To be noted within, so that doesn't change it, it's still a pilot, it's just defining a timeline around it. And so that's my amendment, and that ties it in with the original, because I don't want to stop the Gage Park pilot in going forward. So those are my comments, and that's my amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there a secondary then, Counselor Marula? Are you still prepared? No, you're not. Okay, all right. Hold it, hold it. Is there a secondary to Counselor Partridge's amendment now? Counselor Conley. So the amendment for citywide feasibility is on the floor. Counselor Marula, you wish to speak to that?
Okay, folks, let me just put this in perspective. What is being studied is being paid for out of the Ward-specific budget, and that's the Wi-Fi itself. So you can't study, if Ward 3 doesn't pay for the Wi-Fi, there's nothing to study. Hence, the point of my initiative based on principle is that what's being studied needs to be paid for citywide if there's going to be citywide implementation. If not, then what should just remain is the fact it's just Gage Park, and if somebody wants to pay for a study in their own area, they have to do that as well, because the citywide implementation is what is the crux of the problem here. If this is just for Ward 3, then so be it. But you can't allow Ward 3 to pay for a citywide project that's going to be implemented. Hence, the reason why it should be paid for.
Hold it. Counselor Marula, to the floor.
Citywide.
Okay.
So that's the logic and the rationale, based on principle, why I brought forward the amendment, because if it's going to be, if the study is being paid for by the Ward 3 specific budget, for a study to be conducted for citywide implementation, that in principle is not fair. Thank you.
So, in essence, you'll be voting against the amendment as-is, but the amendment's on the floor. Counselor Whitehead, to the amendment.
For clarification, the Ward 3 residents are going to have a benefit of access to wireless. There's a capital cost and administrative cost to provide that direct service. No one else is going to have that experience. So as far as providing the actual service, which I think was the essence of the motion, I have no problem with the way it's written. And with Counselor Partridge's motion, is funding the actual feasibility and study of it. So it's not about providing the service, it's about studying it and learning from it and determining the feasibility to broach it citywide. So it makes perfect sense to me that the people benefited from it, are actually paying for it. But as far as the broader implications of a study, it would be covered from a different funding source. Makes perfect sense to me. I don't know why we're having so much challenge with it.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. All right, we're going to call the vote. On the amendment, it's understood citywide feasibility over a year. Counselor Partridge, Counselor Conley, all in favor?
Carried.
Any opposed? Counselor Marula, record as opposed? Okay. On the motion as amended, and Counselor Green, it's within the one-year timeframe as well, that's included. Stephanie, moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Marula, as amended. Counselor Johnson?
Just a quick question.
To the motion as amended.
The amendment is within the 12-month, that's the only amendment on to this original motion.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Good discussion. Counselor Farr, welcome back. Your delegation has been so patient. All right, so let's go back, members of committee, to 6.1. Dale Mugford, would you please come down with as many people as you want to, Dale, since they may want to stretch their legs as well? Dale Mugford, Filmwork Lofts, Board of Directors, respecting a proposal for John Rebecca Park. Dale, thank you very much. I understand you may have a slide presentation, a PowerPoint. Welcome. The floor is yours, you have the next five minutes or so to present, and if there's other members of your delegation that wish to speak as well, if you wouldn't mind that they would just give their name for the record, and we'll allow as much time as possible here. Okay, Dale, welcome. Nice to meet you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, members of council and committee, for having us here today. My name is Dale Mugford, Board Chairman for AD King William Street Filmwork Lofts. I'm also a local business owner, father and husband. I'm here today with my wife Roslyn, and joined by Linda Milner, mother of Ryan Milner, who was murdered outside Club 77. Also Jackie Attard, family to Vincent LaFaro, who was murdered this past May outside Club On the early morning of May 13th, when Mr. LaFaro was killed, residents who had heard several gunshots called police and were in shock. Our neighborhood was taped off overnight. Everyone was terrified. It's not the first time something like this has happened. For us, it's become a fact of life. You see, 77 King William Street has a troubling history. In the fall of 2006, Ryan Milner was killed outside Club 77. What started as a brawl turned into a murder after he was stabbed three times, twice in the heart. A friend was also seriously injured. In 2010, the head injuries three Club 77 bouncers inflicted on McMaster Engineering student Chuck Eze were so severe, his neurosurgeon initially rejected surgery because he felt Chuck was dying. He is permanently disabled as a result of this, he said. And in May of this year, Vincent LaFaro was shot and killed outside Club 77. A woman was also injured and taken to hospital with a gunshot wound to her arm. Vincent was an innocent employee waiting for his ride home, but became the target for individuals seeking vengeance on the club. The club was open for business the following day. Upon Vincent's death, our residents had had enough. After years of dealing with violence, property damage, street vomiting, urination and loitering, they brought forth a petition to our condominium board and asked that we submit it to Counselor Farr. In it, they requested the city address the history of violence with concrete action. A different timeline. In 2010, planning began for John Rebecca Park, a park which would reside on the land, currently a parking lot, and also where 77 King William Street is located. Throughout the years of 2010 to 2012, thorough planning was finalized for the building of the park. The 2012 Beasley Neighborhood Newsletter stated, "The city of Hamilton is currently moving forward with this project to help revitalize Hamilton's downtown area." Yet the project was stalled when an offer was made by the city to the club owner, which he allegedly rebuked with a much higher counteroffer. Then nothing happened for the past four years. Money for the park was redirected to other neighborhood park requests. In our building, we have over 100 residents, a combined $300,000 a year in taxes paid to the city, whom were sold on the promise of John Rebecca Park in a changing downtown. There are doctors, teachers, students, entrepreneurs like myself, firefighters, and young couples with children, all living in our building, sold on a vision for the city and the neighborhood that has not been delivered. Instead, it's been repeated violent crime, steps from police headquarters. So what's clear to us is this, one of these timelines is going to continue. The violence or the park? Which one is up to you? Three weeks after the murder of Mr. LaFaro, there was a brawl outside the club filmed by a resident. It shows club staff grappling with a situation that escalated after what appears to be ejections from the club. This video shows that altercation. Do I need to switch for a video?
No, if it's good.
It normally does, but... You can open the video directly from... It is rather important to hear the screams and yelling.
Unfortunately, through Mr. Deputy Mayor, the sound is up all the way.
Dale, I think the picture is speaking a thousand words, but...
It is, but in the following video, the audio would be required.
I see.
I have a terminal speaker here. Into the headphone jack and see if I can...
All right. Thank you, Joey, if this can help.
It's not a great speaker, but it should be...
Okay. Thank you, Joey.
to council. It's, of course, included and was sent to the clerk previously. It is an important video. I can explain the video perhaps, and that might suffice.
Why don't you do that, Dale? That'd be great. Thank you.
So in regards to the video which you saw, which shows the altercation, the club has been given opportunities to collaborate to improve safety. Dozens of concerned residents and business owners were present at a community meeting held on June 21st. The club was invited to attend and speak. They declined to speak, though they did attend. During the Q and A, Counselor Farr was asked what was being done to improve safety. Counselor Farr, in the video, directs the question to the club who was present, and they declined to respect Mr. Farr's request and come up and explain what they would be doing to improve safety for the community. "We want the park to be built. We want clear communication that the city will do so. And we want the park to be built as soon as possible to help us change our community and provide green space for the thousands of new residents that will join us in just a few years. Expecting violence around this venue to cease on its own is wishful thinking. Without real change, it is our belief the violence will continue. On behalf of our community and the Milner and LaFaro families, we request that we do not have to stand here again, possibly with a new family joining us. Finish what you started, build John Rebecca Park, and build a safer Hamilton." Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else then from your delegation that wanted to offer any other words, or you have summed it up? Sounds good?
I think I've summed it.
Okay. Questions or comments of the presenter, Ward 2 Counselor Farr, please, Jason?
Thank you, and thank you to Dale and Roz, and to our guests who have taken the time to come up here. Perhaps these pictures that are on either side of the podium, colleagues are more powerful than any words or sound that we may get from laptop or otherwise, but good presentation. And your presence is very much appreciated. Just before I ask three questions, prepared in advance and with good talks in advance of this delegation with Dale and with Roz and staff, just a quick refresher to my colleagues. 2007, 100 grand is approved for Phase 1 and 2 of the environmental site assessment of the John Rebecca Municipal Parking Lot in preparation for development of this park as part of the downtown secondary plan. So this takes us back some years and gives you a sense of the history of where that plan origins came into be. 2010, 171,500 approved by council in 2010, January, to remediate the property for parkland used to be funded from the Brownfield Capital Account. Urban renewal's been really great and all over this. Also in 2010, 1.1 million approved for the acquisition of lands. Primarily, the land in question here today is one small piece of an entire block, which is essentially, as most of you know who have been around here a long time, municipal parking. We have in our 2018 budget and our 10-year outlook, 1.5 million approved for acquisition, and we have continued to have talks about, especially now, given the circumstances and the unbelievable onslaught of like-minded residents and business owners, talked about how we may expedite. I'm not going to get into the minutia of those advanced meetings, those forthcoming meetings, but I just want to let all of you know that we're very much on the case, and it is my mission to work with Dale and Roz and hundreds and hundreds of others to try to make John Rebecca a reality sooner rather than later, and do it in, hopefully, a creative and cost-effective way. So that's coming, but not today. So for now, to the points that have been raised, and again, in appreciation of the dedication, especially of both Dale and Roz, but Linda and Jackie, thank you again for being here. It's very powerful and it's really important. Who else in the community, Dale, have you reached out to, and what's the response been through you, Mr. Chair?
Dale?
We have reached out to the Beasley Neighborhood Association. We received their support as well. They also believe that moving forward on the park and doing what's necessary to obtain the lands is the right thing for the community. We have been in contact with the SPRC, and they're very supportive of our grassroots effort. We've also received in petition over 500 signatures to date, and the number continues to grow. And we have reached out to all the local business owners, other than all the ones who wish to talk with us, and they all would love to see a park or some variation on the original plan that is suitable to what's happened. If you haven't been to King William Street recently, it's incredible, being a business owner and having lived there and seeing the change in our community, it's all homegrown. They're all Hamilton businesses. It's fantastic. It's becoming another great... It's becoming another great spot downtown, and it is indicative of the change that we're seeing in the city. But it's being blocked, and certainly in our area, blocked towards Theater Aquarius. And I think when we look at the collaboration, the communication that's happened between the local businesses and residents, you know, we're all working together to build a stronger, safer community, and so we feel at hostage currently in that situation.
Thank you, Dale. Councilor Farr?
You met with licensing, the result of the meetings with licensing, and would you be up for a better understanding of some recent communications that you and Roz and I talked about yesterday? And if you want to expand on that first, and then we'll share what we can do for future with a commitment from Ken Lindert, who I also talked to in advance of this meeting. So through you, Chair, just on the licensing aspect.
Well, we approached licensing requesting a review with the intent of pursuing a review by tribunal of the club and its practices. We met with Director Ken Linderties along with Hamilton Police, and present were also members from SPRC. The outcome of that meeting, we assumed, led to review. It was our understanding that the director met with the club owner on two occasions. He reported by email to us that the club was operating within bylaw. We then requested that the review process itself be made available to us to better understand what compliance with bylaw requires. I have not received a response from the director on those requests. I've made two requests for that. I'd like to know what the review process is, what is compliance for the club? When our residents are filming public urination on a weekly basis and noise and sound complaints, it would seem to me that they're not in compliance with bylaw. So I'd like to know what the review process was.
So Ken, in advance, Mr. Chair, and I had a chat right after Dale and Roz and I had last met, and has agreed to share those details, to sit with our delegation today and further discuss. He's here now, if anybody wanted to ask him questions. But would I move a motion to encourage that, or can I just direct that meeting to take place?
Councilor Farr, I'm going to allow, because there's no actual report on the agenda, it was the delegation, whatever you decided with committee support to do after the delegation's received, so I'm going to allow latitude without any staff report if you want to ask questions of the director tying in with the delegation's presentation.
Well, at the appropriate time, I think it would be fair to give our Director of Licensing an opportunity to comment, and then maybe I will follow that up with some direction or a motion that asks that the delegation have an opportunity to further meet, further understand that process. So we'll get to that.
Sounds like a plan.
Through you, just a few more questions to Dale. It is too bad about the sound. I'm very frustrated, and actually, we have an IT guy now that stands out front, an old pal of mine, stands out front of every meeting at 9:30 before they start to try to mitigate these issues in advance, but he, it looks like everything's smooth, and he walks away, and I'm frustrated. We should make him, we should sequester him like we sequestered you today, to sit through the whole meeting, just to make sure this stuff works. And I know with the business you're in, you must be frustrated, so I apologize for that, and I know not knocking clerks. It's something we've got to fix. We need consistency, because it was a scene from a public meeting, well over 100 attended, shortly after the last tragic incident of the many tragic incidents that have been associated in some capacity, alleged or otherwise. And I had asked, there was one representative, Paul was his name, Hamilton, I believe, from the club, in attendance, taking notes. You can imagine, when you consider family members of a recently murdered bouncer from that club are in attendance at a public meeting with hundreds of people, we're trying to get answers, we're trying to figure out, what do we do? And this fellow's sitting in the front row taking notes, and I offered him publicly in front of the room the opportunity to respond and to dialogue and engage with these concerned residents and family members, and they chose not to. And you see this, I said, oh, look, I'll wait five seconds and let you figure it out. You could hear a pin drop in the room, but the delegate, the one representative from the club, chose not to say a word. And I still, to this day, you can see, I'm still really put off by that mentality, that sheer lack of regard for the issue at hand and their neighbors' concerns. Literally, I was expecting something a little more neighborly, and we didn't get it. It almost was as upsetting as the fact that the next night after this tragic incident and that weekend, this same club chose to remain open, flabbergasted by that and disappointed by that. Really humbly, I can tell you, in my six years, I've not seen anything so disrespectful. And here they are, having a public meeting, hoping to get this engagement and dialogue going, having made many attempts in the past, and yet silence from their representative. Tragic, really, really unforgivable. So have you had any contact since? And maybe just a quick review, Dale, through you, Chair, of any kind of engagement to the positive or otherwise with this club in the past, as a neighbor?
In the past, prior to actually the murder of Vincent, residents had tried and former board members had had tried communication over the years regarding various issues with the club and got nowhere, and will save the expletives and the dismissive nature that our residents and former board owners were treated with. The contacts that we've received in terms of the club wishing to actually speak with us on the issue has always been a closed-door request, and we have repeatedly said, this is a community issue, this is a public safety issue, and let's discuss this openly and collaborate openly together. And so we have refused every private request, obviously for safety concerns and, you know, feeling that the issues at hand, the whole community needs to solve together. So we don't feel that we have a partner with our neighbor, and I think very strongly that if, in many neighborhoods, if this was your neighbor, if they were having loud parties many nights of the week with people intoxicated, there's violence, there's smashing bottles, there's urination, there's all of this, you wouldn't stand for that neighbor, and you would want something done about that neighbor. And that's, you know, that's, to put it mildly in this regard, since there is such a history of violent crime. I did not cover all the violent crime which has been reported by police and press regarding the club over the years. So to us, it seems to be a pattern that's consistent with continuance in this case and not ceasing.
Thank you, Dale. Councilor Farr?
Yep, finally through you, Chair. Great images of what was a stakeholder-driven plan. People in the neighborhood got together for a few years, working with our very competent landscape and park architect staff, came up with this. Dale, through the chair, if we're creative and we think outside the box and we try to achieve the John Rebecca vision that was put forward as early as 2007, that sold this condo you and many, many others bought next door in Filmworks Lot, that has improved, as just an idea, the landscape of the neighborhood and the attitudes in this great neighborhood that is Beasley. If we were to modify it any way, would you be open to, if it helped not only expedite but came, was a result of a good compromise conversation in the community and one that's a little more palatable from a budgetary perspective, is that something that your group, and there's hundreds of people behind you, would be able to accommodate, to work with us on, through you, Chair? My final question.
Dale?
I believe so. I think the community has talked about saying that perhaps the original plans may not belong with what has changed. When you think of this drawing here, this was 2012, so that's four years ago, if you looked at, you know, on Google Maps and you look at King William Street, which I enjoy to do from time to time, they can't keep up with the change on the street. So perhaps some modifications are necessary. I think some aspect of the park being present, but also continuance for what's happening on the street with, for residential, considering things like affordable housing could be mixed in there as well as commercial. So I think we can get creative and solve it for what the community needs now and do something that's efficient from a financial perspective. I think the community will support that.
Okay, thanks. And I'll wait to hear questions of the presenters, and then I may have one for Mr. Lindert.
Okay. You want to ask that now?
No, I'll wait.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Farr. Next for questions or comments to the presenters, Councilor Green, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I did, I conferred with our clerks, but I will state for the record, probably about 10 years ago, I worked at the establishment. There's no declaration of interest, I have no pecuniary interest, but I do have lived experience with that location as a former bartender and been involved in the security industry. And I first and foremost just want to acknowledge Linda Milner and Jackie Attard for being here today. I want to acknowledge your loss and the courage that you have to stand here before us. I don't understand, but I think I can appreciate how this has kind of drawn out, you know, your own process of grieving and just being kind of still in this conversation so many, so much time later. I wanted to state that, Mr. Deputy Mayor, just acknowledging your loss and having experienced, myself, what the kind of lawlessness that happens out front of the establishment, if I could go so far as to say, and it's not even just particular to this company. For those of you that are from Hamilton will remember the long history, and I think I can say this now because they're out of business without, but the Texas border was a bit of a gong show back in the day. I can remember growing up, and I never understood how that happened, literally just, you know, 100 meters from the police station. But the reality is with the mob mentality, when people disperse onto the street in such a concentrated place, there's no exits out the back or the side. People are literally, like 1,000 people are coming out into a very concentrated area. Certainly, the laws as it pertains to security are restricted in what they're allowed to do inside versus outside. And so that creates a bit of this lawless state between 2 o'clock and probably 3, 3:30 when the bars let out. But I thought it important, as you, you know, standing here before us today, holding the pictures of your family members, just to acknowledge your loss and let you know that it's not lost on us, and I just appreciate your courage for being here. That's really all I have to say on the matter. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Appreciate the comments. Councilor Green. Councilor Skelly, please.
Thank you, Chair. And Dale, that was a very, very powerful presentation, and I wanted to express my condolences as well to the families of the victims. I cannot imagine what you're going through, to lose a child, a family member in such a senseless violent act is just unbelievable, and my heart breaks for you. I don't know if any of you can answer this question, it's kind of expanding a little on what Councilor Green was bringing up, but I'm not sure if any of you have lived in the area long enough, but is this heightened level of violence different with this current ownership, or has it? Because I don't recall, and I've been around the city a long time, but I don't recall this level of violence at that location.
I can speak a little bit to it, and again, I must say that the individuals that we've spoken to, again, this has to be stated clearly as allegedly, because it's not based on any investigations that I'm aware of, but they have said it's the worst it's ever been. So I don't know what that means. I don't know what they're talking about, what they're referring to, but there does seem to be some desperation from within the club, that there's some concern that things are out of hand. And that kind of, you know, that's one of my concerns. I don't personally blame any individual, any security member, any employee there, even the owners themselves, for the acts of people who commit the crimes. I'm certainly not saying that. Nor do I really blame bylaw or police. This is why it's before you today, why we wish to bring it to you, which is to say, if police are saying, we just can't prevent this, and Sergeant Dave Valenek alluded to that in his press conference, that it was unpreventable. So if the club is grappling with the issues and trying to handle outrageous patrons who are behaving in such a horrible way, bylaw has no means by which to prevent these things from happening. We've got police, bylaw, and the club itself saying, we can't stop it. So what's left? Hostage. Everyone is held hostage here, and no one's taking responsibility for what's happening. We're saying, okay, enough. We had a plan here to build a park in the area. The building has to be purchased as a part of that plan. It's just going to cost more money to keep going on for years and years and years. And to be frank, bringing it here today, I feel relieved, because I say it's on you now. We've done our part as a community to this issue to you and to speak to our desperation and that we are grappling with lives and destruction of real families. And if no one can do anything from the police standpoint, if the club is hogtied and they just...
Which is also part of the OPP, and they have had no issues with the operation of this business. We've been dealing with the police service, and although every major incident or every bar does have its incidents, there is nothing that jumps out of them that says that this is any worse than any other major gathering of people. We have looked at all our occurrences, and although there's 25 different entries of different noise complaints and all that, there are, most of those out of the 25, most were unfounded. So from our point of view, from my review of everything, I don't have solid evidence to bring forth for a tribunal at this point. Although we had a homicide there, there are homicides throughout the city that can happen out front of any business, although we know that the perpetrators were from the business and unfortunately, the victim was also. But that doesn't play into the part that they should not be operating a business. So from what I see at this juncture is, it's always up to a tribunal to decide if they don't think they should have a license, but I don't see the evidence before me that I would take them to a tribunal.
Thank you. Through the chair, if documented brawls, attacks on customers, a murder or two, isn't enough as documented evidence, what do we need to pull the license on an establishment?
So can I just offer some caution, Director? Between you and Janice Atwood-Pakowski, you'll advise us if there's anything delicate that we need to hear in camera for legal reasons, but otherwise, Director, I'm going to let you continue, but I'll leave it to you to provide the caution if you need to. So to Councilor Skelly's question. Okay, hold it. Councilor Whitehead has offered to offer some comment as Chair of the Licensing Tribunal, but I would suspect, Councilor Whitehead, you may not want to because of your position with that. Anyways, Councilor Skelly's asked a legitimate question. I offered caution, but Director of Licensing and former Deputy Police Chief, you have enough wisdom to tell us if we need to go in camera. Carry on.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Although a homicide is quite the most severe violence you can get at a tavern, I think you need to show that the bar contributed to that, for the license to be impacted. And from the review of the policies and procedures, the security plan that they have in place, the amount of people they're having in place, and certainly, I don't know if it could be prevented or not in particular, but I don't see the evidence that I could bring forward to a tribunal in saying that this is a place that shouldn't be operating as a business at this time.
Thank you, Director. Councilor Skelly, you still have the floor.
Thank you. Through the chair, and I'm sure Councilor Farr has thought of this, but some establishments, the Hess Street area, for example, has extra policing, and I can't remember whether the city's picking up the tab or whether the establishment has to pick up the tab, but is that something that we've considered, that they have to provide and pay for additional policing outside the establishment? Or again, is because licensing is unable to make a direct correlation between a level of violence and heightened concern on the city's part that this isn't even being considered?
Ken? Special policing costs, similar to Hess Village, I believe the counselor's getting at, hypothetically?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, that it could be a result of a tribunal. I know that with my two meetings with the prop business owner as well as the police department, that if there is a specific event that they have, they do call police in, and with the level of security and their security plan and their training and their communication system, the police are not concerned. And I don't want to talk to the police, what the police are saying, but I know certainly the crime manager that's been dealing with this issue, they work very closely with these taverns, these bars, to, if the level of security is required, additional police, that they strongly recommend it. In Hess Village, it's a different animal, because you have 5,000 people that can travel from one bar to another. It's a definitely entertainment district, and a lot of the incidents happen outside of the taverns and on the streets that cause great concern, and that's why the security plan or the entertainment district was created for Hess Village.
Thank you, Director. Councilor Skelly?
Thank you, Ken. And just to comment through the chair, and it's simply that, you know, I feel frustrated and I can't imagine how you feel, that we don't have, you know, with this amount of information that we have in front of us, we still can't do anything about it. And yeah, I don't know what to say other than I hope that we make the right decision and we will do, I will do what I can to see that this ends because I don't think anybody should have to live in a neighborhood with this amount of violence really in your own, right outside your own door.
Thank you, Counselor Skelly. Counselor Whitehead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions on the park. I was told that it was part of an original secondary plan. I'm trying to understand the zoning that currently exists for the club and the buildings in that area, they pre-existed the plan for the park. The zoning's in place for those lawful operations. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, it's the only non-conforming use is for entertainment purposes, I believe. It's the only non-conforming use for the businesses operating at 77 King William. It is zoned park. The area is actually zoned park according to my understanding.
So currently that particular building is grandfathered as non-conforming?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's what it is. Yeah. Yeah. And the whole block is zoned to be a park with the, there's Lulu Shwarmas on this corner and-
So I need clarification on that because how does a building get built then on parkland if it's non-conforming?
It's a historical building. It was a part of the Hamilton Spectator building of which our building was converted into condominiums. That building remained, I believe that's where they ran their office way back when. So I think that's why it's been grandfathered from a very long, for a very long time. It's existed in the area.
Yeah, but wouldn't have been zoned as park. It would have been zoned as something like offices or something. There would have been a use for that because the building pre-existed any planning for a park there. Is that correct?
I believe city council itself changed the zoning to be a park, perhaps with the downtown secondary plan, et cetera. So I think-
I'm just trying to understand the order of things.
To match the intention of what was supposed to be in the area.
So it's non-conforming in regards to the current operation of that particular club?
It's non-conforming, yeah.
Okay. Dale, I appreciate you providing that even though you can't speak for the Department of the City, but I appreciate from what you understand, helping the counselor-
Thank you.
It's good to understand because the community, obviously by the sounds and by the looks, have done a lot of due diligence and I would assume they've done that kind of due diligence as well. So the park encompasses taking down that building?
The recommendation, as far as I understand, when looking at the city planning documents, was that the, yeah, the two buildings be removed that are currently on the lot to make way for the full design of the park. It was, of course, debated that the buildings would stay and have the park behind it, et cetera, but that was ultimately decided on that it wasn't the best use of the space at the time.
And has there been discussions? Because I'm not sure what the holdup is. Maybe I can answer that question to-
The holdup is the, sorry to interrupt you, sir. The holdup is that the owner did not wish to sell at the price the city offered to him.
But I'm talking about a staged or phased approach to the park. I mean, to create hope, you need to put a shovel in the ground and start transitioning that location regardless of ownership of that particular quadrant. So I'm trying to understand, has there been discussion about moving forward on a staged or phased approach to this park?
Dale?
There was discussion on a staged approach, but I would put forward to you that I wish there would be no park where children would play behind a violent place like this. So I would vehemently oppose a staged progress to this by putting our community in further harm's way, exposing them in that manner. So and I think it, you know, again, it was over many years of planning was identified that a staged process would not be the recommended solution.
So my understanding is that the function and the timeframe that most of these incidents that you talk about is happening 2:00 in the morning. Do you anticipate children being in the park at 2:00 in the morning?
That's up for the families to decide. They can use the park as they please. It would be for the public. You know, we have documented incidents that have taken place during the day in the area as well. You know, outside in the, behind it in the alley and the front way too. So whether they're, you know, it's during the night or during the day, things happen around that building.
Can you through the chair tell me what the hours of operation? In my understanding, they weren't open during the day. You're telling me they are?
I'm saying that during the day, it appears to be that they're preparing for the evening activities and there are still people coming and going, perhaps employees. I'm just simply saying that there are other things that happen during the day in the area.
Okay, I'm trying to understand, this is like a situation I had in my area where we moved to forward and actually moving forward did create a sense of accomplishment and it creates safety for the community. But to hold off, so we want it all or we don't move forward, I don't think that's fair to the community. So I'm just trying to understand that logic, especially understanding the actual operating hours of this particular facility. I think maybe I can ask the campaigners, do you know what those operating hours are?
Ken?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I think they're open and don't quote me, but I think they're just open on the weekends and the odd time on a Wednesday and then a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And the hours change according to the day. Obviously during frost week, I think they're going to be open for the entire week, but the hours of operation are just in the evenings.
So I guess what I'm suggesting, and it works, and I don't understand why it has to be off or nothing. I understand we got to get the building. I would propose, because it is of public interest, that we pursue expropriation of a particular property if it's non-conforming. So there is a process that needs to be considered. It could be caught more costly. I understand that. But I shouldn't hold up moving forward on starting the development, knowing that the real hours of operation have the least impact from a neighborhood park amenity point of view to at least start those stages. Because it wouldn't take long once you accomplish the, if it is a willing buyer, willing seller, purchase of the building or an expropriation, that shouldn't ransom moving ahead with the park. And I guess I'm just struggling with why there would be resistance, understanding the hours of moving ahead. And this council would be there. I'm absolutely positive. We'd be right behind Counselor Farr, who shows great leadership, to address that quadrant piece. And it might be a little more complex. I appreciate that. But God, we should be able to move ahead with the staging of the park. So I'm all there for the park. I'm all there for the expropriation. I just hate to see more delay because I know those, when you're going down that path of willing buyer, willing purchaser, or the licensing or any of those issues, they're a lot more complex and they could delay this project longer. And I don't think the community wants to wait any longer. So let's move on with the park and put a plan, a strategy together on those two buildings moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. And Dale, appreciate the sincerity of your response against staging for the reasons you've given. And the counselor's given some good reasons, maybe why it should be looked at again. Counselor Pearson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and certainly my condolences as well. And it's a very sad situation that we have to deal with and facilities and very rare, fortunately, but we still have it happening. Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, a number of my questions were answered as we went around the table, but I did want to ask, and it's been in the back of my head in the last little while, what's the difference between this particular situation through you to Mr. Linders and what happened at the Sandbar and how the province stepped in at the Sandbar and was able to shut that down?
Director of Licensing, again, Linders?
Yes, through you, Deputy Mayor. It was a different piece of legislation that was used. It was a federal piece of legislation where they actually, the police went after the possession and ownership of the property, the province did. The police did the work and the province actually took ownership over it. In that situation, you had an active crack house and dealer that was operating inside. There were several homicides inside the actual building. And it just led to, the police tried to do everything and finally they used provincial powers. That was the first time it was used in the province where the property was seized under the Provincial Proceeds of Crime Act and then eventually turned over to the province that eventually turned over to the city. So completely different because of the owners were not, they were actually involved with criminal activity?
Counselor Pearson?
And I certainly appreciate that, certainly being out there for the public record as well, because that was quite a situation that we had to deal with several terms ago. And that property was handed over to the city at the end of the day. So it's, I'm not saying it's unfortunate, but I do support going forward, the possibility of expropriation. I'm sure the good Ward Counselor has been trying very hard in moving this forward. As a matter of fact, I've just been Googling today and I don't know why, it's coming up as a RE/MAX listing for 77 King William, which is rather strange. So I'm just putting that out there. But I thank you and certainly everyone here. My condolences again and certainly be very happy and always supportive of the Ward Counselor going forward in his initiatives here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pearson. Welcome, Counselor Ferguson, to GIC. Okay, there's no other first time questioners or speakers. Counselor Farr, I'm coming back to you. We can officially receive the delegation, moved by yourself, seconded by Counselor Skelly, to officially receive for the record. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion, Carrie Dale. And to everyone, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please sit in on what the discussion's going to ensue from here. Counselor Farr, back to you now if you want to provide some further direction.
Through you to Ken. Are you willing, Ken, to meet with the delegates in the very near future and as well bring some of your reps from HPS?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. That's correct. I've already talked to the police department and they'd be glad to, again, meet with the delegation. And as you know, we did attempt to broker some communications with the parties and the bar owner, but understanding their position, they want to do this in public, so.
And fair enough. So for now, you, members of HPS, and the delegates that were before us representing hundreds of others, and I can just leave that as direction. I trust that Ken will probably meet you guys in the hall immediately following this meeting. And when you're ready to leave, he'll sneak out and arrange that with you. So Mr. Deputy Mayor, Ken mentioned to the Board Seven Counselors, very good questions. No issues when he investigated AGCOs. HPS, he said nothing jumps out at them. He said regarding his team and bylaw, 25 noise complaints. Yet, here today, two families standing here with pictures that are of murdered victims from the vicinity, hundreds of names on a petition, almost all, if not all, grave concerns with respect to this address, videos that continue to grow in numbers of violence that have been taken and continue to be taken and disruption. So through you to Janice. Janice, and you're here, right?
Yeah.
Janice, I'm not a member, I'm not a member of the Licensing Committee. You're the one to ask this question to. Am I able today to give some peace of mind to get some action out of today's very good delegation and very good meeting? Am I able to request a show cause hearing, not being a member of the Licensing Tribunal? Is that something you can stop me as well?
Yeah, Counselor Farr, we're going on very thin ice here. I'm very worried about the members of the tribunal who are here that might have to recuse themselves. Yeah, they might have to recuse themselves. All right.
Can I, I'll just ask the question of legal if I'm able to and if I am, maybe they can recuse themselves?
Janice Edwood-Pakowski?
So I am, I'm not sure in all fairness whether or not that's a request that this counselor can make, but I would suggest that maybe this is something that bylaw and legal want to put their heads together, take a look at it. I don't think we've had that opportunity yet to talk to Ken and Marty and whoever about this and maybe take a look at what we can do.
Yep. Thanks, Janice. Counselor Farr, hold it. Our clerk too, Stephanie?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The issuer of licenses has to request a show cause hearing through the clerk's office and provide us with the reasons why they would be doing that. So the actual document would need to come from the issuer of licenses and they would have to have reasons underneath or pursuant to the bylaw in order to request that hearing.
Thank you, Stephanie. Counselor Farr, I would humbly suggest maybe some huddling after this meeting on that enforcement aspect, licensing, moving forward, whatever. Counselor Murilla, just on this point, please, to Counselor Farr?
Because at the end of the day, the motion would be to direct the manager of licensing to request the clerk initiated a show cause hearing. So in essence, that's exactly what the motion would be.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I would just exercise caution in the fact that without the counselor having the appropriate and all of the evidence before him to request a show cause hearing pursuant to the licensing bylaw, if the city's issuer of licenses feels that there is a need, he would issue that, but having a motion from council to direct him to do so when they at this time have clearly stated that they don't believe there's enough evidence to put a show cause hearing before the tribunal, I think would not be a very good thing to do at this stage.
Sound advice, Stephanie. Counselor Murilla, I appreciate your assistance to help. Counselor Farr, again, I would, as the chair suggests, I don't, I'm trying to protect this body as well. I would suggest after the meeting, maybe huddling with staff, the appropriate staff in terms of moving forward in that, on that particular issue. I think we want to hear more possibly, I would suggest, on the plans, solid plans moving forward on the block.
That's how I intend to wrap up. And I'm very positive, though. So through you, Chair, hypothetically to Janice, or actually Steph, our clerk. If we had a tribunal on this or any matter, are residents permitted to come and offer evidence in addition? Are residents like they were today as delegates able to come to a licensing tribunal?
Hypothetically, on any issue whatsoever, Stephanie?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. On any matter that's before the tribunal, no, they do not take delegations. However, staff and/or the appellant may summons a witness to speak on their behalf at any time. But the public can sit to observe, but no, they cannot just randomly speak. But if they are summoned by either the witness or the appellant to speak, they may do so.
Can they offer correspondence through the chair?
No, it is a quasi judicial, similar to the courts where, so if you think of it in that mindset.
Okay. Thank you very much, Stephanie. Counselor Farr?
Thank you. I'm so glad you're chair today. It's an important thing, but I also understand, and I know our delegation understands, it can be a delicate matter. We heard, I mentioned the word allege. It's important that we did that. Dale mentioned the word allege as well as we talk about the issues. Notwithstanding, quite publicly, I'm very disappointed. I'm disappointed that they failed to engage in a way that I think was necessary immediately following the last murder in the area. I'm disappointed that they don't want to seem to communicate in open forum, in open session. And you know what? Thirdly, and more importantly, I'm disappointed in myself for not pressing a little harder to maintain the good pace we were on some years ago for this wonderful master plan. This is a great thing. Parkings came up with a parking review that said, well, you know, let's hold off because we need the parking. We figured out ways around that now. Dale had mentioned that we also did at one point, and I'll speak very generally, as a counsel in my time, went and made an offer. But they came back, it wasn't the expropriation, it was an offer. We said, real estate, go see, we want to get going on this John Rebecca plan. Go see if we can't buy this establishment. They came back with a very high number. When real estate reported back to us, we said, no. But we used, and Dale mentioned this, we did use that budget to do the great things we're doing at Gore Park, what you're seeing in the same neighborhood, the Beasley neighborhood, and the Beasley Park redevelopment. So fortunately, I had the good sense, as the representatives of the good people of Beasley in War II, to maintain the budgetary piece and focus still on parks. But I kicked myself for not five years ago maintaining the pace. I remember sitting in one of the last stakeholder meetings for John Rebecca. So, and on a good note, focusing now on a master plan and a good one, in the heart of our city where we just had a tremendous announcement today regarding the fully approved, unanimously approved student tower from Leuna. But at the tail end of that announcement, right around the corner, another terrific announcement, still in its infancy, regarding the purchase by Leuna of the Kreske property, the old bingo hall, to do something very significant again in this great neighborhood and ready to work and converse with people from the Neighborhood Association and other stakeholders right out of the gate on some of their great ideas. And that was announced officially today in this very neighborhood. So even more fitting now. Wouldn't it have been great if the park came before these wonderful developments? But we can still do this thing. And I would like to first move that staff prepare an information update on the evolution of this master plan, a quick three pager for all of you to review from a historical perspective. It's recent history, but I don't expect that you remember exactly how the linear history of John Rebecca evolved and how and why we put things off when we did, not too long ago, but we did. So if staff can include in the next GIC or the following GIC, a brief update, and then at that time, I may, a brief information update, if that's okay. Through you, it looks like Stephanie wants to comment on that. I'm always welcome that.
Just to clarify through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, what you're asking for is an information report to come back- report to come back to this committee, not an information update, which gets sent up by email.
Right, you're right. Report, so it's a public document as opposed to an update, which is just an internal email. Thank you, Stephanie. And then at that time, I may have, like I said earlier, I alluded to, there's been lots of stuff going on behind the scenes. This was one of many ways to get the message out that the status quo can no longer exist. To remind all of you that not only the status quo is disturbing hundreds and hundreds of people in the neighborhood and continues to be documented very well by nearby residents, but there's something here that we can get back on track. And I think, and I'll say it one last time, that we can do this in an expeditious way, but also in one that works as a great compromise and understanding we got the 1.5 and the 218 for acquisition already approved for 2018, I think we can do it in a monetarily prudent manner, prudent fashion. So at the time of the update, I may require, I may have to go on camera because it may be a matter of purchasing or real estate, but I could probably within two weeks or a month, if it takes that long, to get it on a GIC agenda. The day that that update, that historical review is on the agenda, I would be happy to share with all of you, my colleagues and you, Mr. Mayor, the progress we're making with the talks on other options to get us to this wonderful concept in the near, in the mirror future. And I thank again the delegates. I really appreciate when they really take the bull by the horns, they engage, they don't take no for an answer, and it's such a strong and committed collective in the Beasley neighborhood and the Filmworks Loft are, these people are, they have made some significant investments to live in the heart of our downtown in recent time. And it's incredible the amount of time and energy and focus they have on engaging and making their, our neighborhood a better place. So I really appreciate the time they took today to prepare this and the continued efforts they make.
No apology needed, councillor Farr. I just see you resuming the file today in earnest. So well done. First time speakers, I want to recognize Mayor Eisenberger, who's just returned from representing us at a couple of important functions. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for all the good work that the committee is doing. I'm sorry I missed the beginning of the presentation and I do want to pass along my condolences to the family of victims of crime. I mean, it's a tragedy, no matter how you look at it and wherever it happens, and the fact that it's happening here is even more of a tragic situation. But what I want to get to and beyond that, you know, this has been a vision for the city of Hamilton since 2007, my first term as mayor. We really defined this as an opportunity to create a green space, which then could inspire, you know, additional developments around, around the periphery of the park. That was really the kind of the genesis of what it was, started out to be in the first place. And it's even more true today than it was in 2007. It's actually, we have more people coming downtown, right in this area, and we're inspiring more development as we go. And that is going to require, you know, more green space than what Gore Park actually allows. Gore Park is not a park that is conducive to kind of a family, a family atmosphere necessarily. It needs a, you know, a full, fully constituted downtown park that will allow families to enjoy the green space that most of our neighborhoods have in abundance, in fact. And that we don't have that in abundance downtown. So I want to support the councillor in terms of the effort to get this plan into place. I think it is, it is an economic development tool, in my view, you know, to build the park will inspire people to do even more development than is occurring already. And there's a significant amount already occurring based on the announcement this morning, which is the student residence and the Kreski building. And I know of others that are in the offing, that are not far from this location. And you know what? You can't bring that many people downtown and not offer green space. So I'm, I just want to support the councillor and the work that he's trying to do here to accomplish this and whatever we need to do to get this moving along, I think would be helpful and to square it off completely would be even better. So making sure that we own all the property at some point down the road. And I'm not sure what that's going to take, but I think we need to put the effort in to get there. So I just want to support the good work of the councillor. I know, I know that this has been a long-term vision. I think it's certainly in my mind, something that we need to do. Don't necessarily want to jump the queue on other things, but understand that, you know, priorities come to the table and we need to take hold of them as they come to us. So this is one that I think in my mind has long been something that should have been a higher priority than it has been. And I hope that we can elevate it to an imminent priority now so that we can benefit the neighborhood as a whole and inspire additional development. And that's the kind of development we want to have happen downtown. We want more people downtown. That's what we talk about all the time. Slowly and surely it's happening. This will inspire more people to actually consider downtown as a living space that will allow them to look at other developments in the area to add to the value of our downtown development as we go along. So I just want to support the councillor. I think this is the right vision. How we get there, we can have, you know, ongoing discussions about how we can be creative in this, but I think this is a must do and the sooner the better. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Marula and then councillor Whitehead. Councillor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just have to express really my disappointment in the licensing enforcement and this whole issue. As you know, I had a lot of experience and I thought things had improved, but what we have here today, I think is a failure of, a systemic failure in that a show cause hearing at licensing tribunals is just that, to show a cause with respect to a problem or a presenting problem. We have residents here, we've had two murders, we have residents here providing evidence that they want to present as a show cause to determine whether or not this operation should continue to function. The job of the enforcement officer is to seek out that evidence that the allegations, based on the allegations that are made. And when they go out to investigate and report back and put that evidence forward to the licensing or can, and then invite as witnesses, the residents to the tribunal to provide that evidence, to testimony. None of that is happening. So what we have here is a systemic failure. And who's really being victimized here are the residents, again. And there's a history of this in the city. So I must, I have to publicly state that I'm very disappointed by what I'm hearing. Obviously, things haven't improved. We went through an entire operational review, heads rolled, and frankly, based on what I'm hearing today and what I'm seeing today, absolutely nothing has changed and I'm very, very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marula, for speaking to the systemic general problem you feel we still have. Councillor Whitehead, please.
Thank you. I can understand the frustration. Natural law, you need to deal with facts and you need to deal with the bylaw, you need to deal with the circumstances and you also need to, and you also need to deal with precedents of judicial reviews. All those things come into play through these processes. So I understand the frustration, but that, those are the realities that you have to live within. So.
I'm listening, councillor Whitehead.
Thank you. I don't think I interrupted. The, you know, we provide, I'm a bit surprised because, I mean, we talked about this quadrant. I know it's going to be complex if it's not a willing buyer, willing seller. You know, I've actually pushed expropriation, which actually got them to the table where we actually, in some cases, actually purchased the property, had it assessed, had three, assessments on the property. So this community wants something and wants something desperately happened sooner than later. We talked, I did talk about staging. I think councillor Farr talked about moving this forward, but you know, we, right now, over and above the block funding and it's always competitive, we know that. But we also have the area rating funding. I think it's 1.5, 1.4, 1.5, and I think councillor Marula's leadership on the City Motor Hotel issue with those revenues. And I think that that's one source of dollars that can help expedite this particular development. Just having a report come forward, to me, I want to see an action plan. I don't want to just see a report saying this is what's planned. I want to say, see what the timelines are, what the dollars are being allocated, what the barriers are so that we can clearly expedite this project. I'm fully supportive of the concept. That was, when I first saw it and I still am, I'm fully supportive of ensuring that the resources are there. I don't understand why it hasn't happened sooner when we have the area rating dollars, we have the block funding, we have expropriation tools, unless there are other factors involved with the, I think I heard recently parking was still needed, so they couldn't move too quickly until they had alternative parking. Maybe there are some clear explanations, but I want to help councillor Farr move this expeditiously as possible. And anything that I can do to facilitate and work with my colleagues to make it happen, I want to thank the community for coming forward and making such a compelling case. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. Councillor Farr, would you wrap this up, please, like you used to do in your radio days?
Mr. Chairman, I would move, seconded by councillor Green, that the appropriate staff prepare an information update with respect to the history of John Rebecca master plan, its evolution and its current budget.
And with the understanding who may need to go on camera on a real estate matter as well with that report.
On the day it comes to very near future GIC.
Just to prepare staff, just in case.
It's not going to be a complicated endeavor. Cynthia's here, Rob's here, there's others here.
Perfect.
That can slap an information report for the public certification, for councillor's certification and come back at that time where it's public, but we may have a good in-camera discussion at that very meeting as well.
Moved by councillor Farr, seconded by councillor Green. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Dale and Neighborhood, hopefully this will be a springboard to a more positive, sooner outcome. Okay? Thank you all for being here. Yes, you may clap your councillor. Okay, members of committee, councillor Aiden Johnson. GIC insisted I not move ahead on 8.1 without you being here.
That is very kind.
So you may thank all your colleagues because the chair wanted to move ahead quickly, but they put the reins on me.
And I hate to furnish an anticlimax, but an anticlimax I shall furnish.
So 8.1, councillor Aiden Johnson, Patrick made a wonderful presentation. I just wanted to segue to let you know, we held off 8.1. It's now before us, this information item.
And if I may speak to it.
Please.
So my request, Mr. Chair, is going to be for a tabling motion to next GIC and I have two reasons for this. One, councillor Vanderbeek isn't here and it directly impacts her award. I'm looking forward to her good insights into this question. They will be of value and I think it's appropriate we wait on her. Second reason, when this motion was crafted in the summertime, there were certain parts that are now moving that relate to this deal, were not moving. So new information may be available come next GIC that isn't available now. The information isn't ripe to share, shall we say, but in addition to councillor Vanderbeek not being here, I think we're going to have some clearer, better information about the financial side of my motion to share and discuss next time. So for those two reasons, I propose tabling. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I'll look to a seconder for that tabling. Councillor Green. But before you put that, there's some others that wish to speak to the item and then we'll go to you for your tabling. Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, but I don't think he's referring to 8.1. I thought we were dealing with 8.1.
Yes, we are dealing with 8.1.
Which is regarding the question, I think what he's talking about is the ECO.
Oh, thank you, councillor Partridge.
Which is a motion. It's a completely different topic.
Mr. Chair, I need to thank councillor Partridge for catching my mistake. Thank you. I thought we were dealing with, forgive me, I mixed up the numbers relating to matters. I thought I was, colleagues, to clarify, my words refer to the ECO Park motion, the investment in lands in councillor Vanderbeek's ward. Councillor Vanderbeek, councillor Partridge, I owe you a big thank you for catching that.
Thank you, councillor Partridge. The chair, I thought emphasized, we were on 8.1, but thank you, councillor Partridge.
Completely my mistake, Mr. Chair, and I apologize to you.
All right, so are we going to, the ECO, we're going to kind of go, we're going to circumvent 8.1, which was Mr. Birmingham's issue, the picnic on the bridge?
Yes. Pardon me, and I'm happy to speak to picnic on the bridge also.
Well, okay, so we're jumping ahead, members of committee. Thank you for being here, councillor Aiden Johnson. We're jumping ahead.
I forgive you, I had an obligation in the morning.
You spoke to the ECO, 9.2.
I've just spoken to the ECO Park, but I can save my thoughts.
Councillor Partridge, any further comment on that or you wanted to clarify simply?
No, that was just for clarification. I will support the tabling motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any speakers to the ECO Park? Councillor Ferguson?
No, I was wanting to speak to 8.1.
8.1 is one.
At first, Mr. Chair, I'd like to apologize for not being here earlier.
Yes.
I was doing a sod turning for a brand new facility boom at the Ancaster Industrial Park, which is going to employ 30 new people and 25,000 new square footage of industrial space in the Ancaster Industrial Park. So I apologize, but I was doing other city business.
Terrific. Further investment for our great city. Wonderful. Any other speakers to 9.2, the ECO Park? Moved by councillor Aiden Johnson, seconded by councillor Partridge to table to another meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Councillor Aiden Johnson, can we go back to 8.1 now and picnic on the bridge?
Absolutely. So colleagues, you've read the report. My understanding, based on conversations with staff, is that the planning conversations are ongoing. I'm looking forward to more information about the impact on traffic and about how we can pull this off in a way that works for all stakeholders. I'd actually like to turn it over, oh, I was going to ask Mr. Murray to speak to it. Perhaps another member of staff can comment on best next steps.
You wanted the city manager, Chris Murray?
Oh, he is there. Pardon me.
Yes, thanks.
City manager, picnic on the bridge. Councillor Aiden Johnson, wanted a comment from you further, please?
Certainly, we're aware, I had the opportunity of meeting with Mr. Birmingham some time ago and staff have been following up. So, you know, it is a, you know, from our standpoint, it's a, it's a very doable project and we're happy to report back on anything that would impact the city of Hamilton.
Thank you, city manager. Bridgette McIntosh authored the report is here as well. Councillor Aiden Johnson, in case you need her.
Please, and if Bridgette would like to add any comments she would like to make, I'd be glad to hear it.
Bridgette, who authored the report, please?
Hi, through the chair, yes, that is correct, councillor. We have been working with the special event advisory team to hear more information about the concept and the report does lay out at this time, based on the information that we have, the certain considerations that would need to, the organizers would need to take into account and with the, been their presentation noting that they are looking at now at a Sunday date, that they are fine with keeping.
The report was just about whether we could determine whether it was feasible. So it definitely is feasible if we do it on a Sunday. So the next steps are that the organization has to put in a seat application. The seat application would then go through our process and that's when any of.
In the Dundas Valley, major contributor to saving the Hermitage. So I'm thrilled that he's leading this thing and I'm prepared to fully support it at the right time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Councillor Partridge, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just had two, two things that I wanted to add. One was under the HSR Transit that it did not reference the Water Down bus route number 18, which would have been impacted. However, now that it's changing to a Sunday, the Water Down 18 bus does not run on Sundays. It runs six days a week, so that shouldn't be an impact. But should that change, I would like that just to be there on consideration. The second point, Mr. Chairman, which I referenced earlier with Patrick's presentation, is to take into consideration working with the RBG. If we are looking at using their parking facilities, I think it's important that A, we let them know the date that we're thinking of, B, see if they have any events going on that day, because they do have their jazz on Sundays with their brunch, et cetera, et cetera. And if the plan is to use their parking facilities and perhaps incorporate a shuttle bus, to have that, them as one of the partners that we, that we speak to and coordinate with. And other than that, I'm, I'm just, I'm hugely supportive of this and especially being a fundraiser for the ECO Park, which is very dear to my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Partridge. Mayor Eisenberger.
In a similar vein, Deputy Mayor, I would say this is very supportable. This is actually a clever idea, I think by Birmingham, who has, you know, been the underpinning of many of our bridges throughout our community. So a nice fit, a nice fundraising opportunity, a unique idea that is not unique to Hamilton, it's been done in other places, but I think we should put ourselves on the list of one of those that embraces these kinds of great, open and dynamic ideas for people to engage in a different kind of way in some of the heritage properties that we have and the high level bridge is certainly one of them. So I'm very excited about this and I, and you know, as I understand it, the seat process will work. They will give the approval based on the requirements of the seat process. All the issues in terms of parking and access and keeping the lane open and picking the right day are going to be considered. I don't, I don't imagine this needs to come back to council beyond that. Correct? Correct? So the seat process kind of works, as we do with all our other events. The seat process works through their process and then makes the right call in terms of putting all the things in place to make sure it's an approved.
Okay, you're hearing it, you're seeing a nodding up that there, Mr Mayor?
So which I'm happy with, because I don't see a reason for us to kind of belabor this. I think it's a great idea, it just needs to have the proper structure. They're going to make sure that that happens and if it doesn't pan out that way, if they can't meet the requirements of the seat process, then certainly we'll hear about it, but I can't imagine that to be true, so how exciting, I think this is going to be great. I can't wait to be on the bridge and have dinner.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First-time speaker councillor Skelly, please.
Thank you. Great idea. Love it. Think it's fabulous. My one concern is if we do invite the Prime Minister, the security detail around that could be a little prohibitive, a little difficult to, have you considered that in terms of how you would be able to have such a public function with the Prime Minister in attendance?
Anna or Bridgette, please.
Through the chair. Certainly if that ever happened, we are quite well-versed in how to handle visits like that. Certainly we did the royal visit a few years ago, so nothing is impossible, it would just be a little bit different, but we can certainly take that into account and make it work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Skelly. Councillor Aidan Johnson, second time to put a summary to it, please.
Thanks. I wasn't clear enough on something that needs to be said, Mr Chair, which is the following. Our staff has done some pretty amazing work, working with multiple stakeholders to bring this together, to Anna and to Bridgette and to Chris and Brian McDonald, who I know played a role. I'd just like to say on behalf of Ward 1, thank you very much and I agree with the comments we've heard, that it's a very exciting project. Thank you colleagues for showing your support. I'm very hopeful we can pull together a beautiful plan for this initiative. And just quickly, Mr Chair, I apologize for missing the formal presentation. I was at the Red Mass. The St Thomas More Lawyers Guild is the Roman Catholic Lawyers Guild and Judges Guild of Hamilton Region. Their annual mass was this morning and Bishop Crosby, the Catholic Bishop of Hamilton, asked me to bring special greetings to council, so I'm pleased to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Aidan Johnson. Moved by yourselves, seconded by councillor Ferguson to receive 8.1. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Patrick, I hope this morning's weight was worth it. There you go. Very good. All right, members of, on this item, councillor Green?
Still under.
I was moving ahead to notice a motion.
Generate information in other.
Not even there yet. I've got notices of motion on my roadmap, councillor Green. Thank you.
As always, thank you very much, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, notices of motion, 10.1. Councillor Marula, something to do with extension of outdoor swimming pools and hours. Councillor Marula, would you like to waive the notice of motion rule?
I do indeed and it's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Aidan Johnson.
To waive the rules?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Councillor Marula, the motion.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Aidan Johnson. Whereas hot weather can contribute to the development of heat-related illness to the general population and public health issues, whereas some residents, including seniors, young children and people with pre-existing medical conditions, may be less able to cope and acclimatize to hot weather conditions and are considered as having an increased risk of developing a heat-related illness, whereas the city of Hamilton, in consultation with public health services, have developed a community heat response plan to help residents cope with heat events, whereas the city of Hamilton's 10 outdoor swimming pools play a vital role in the community heat response plan, providing residents with the ability to cool off, whereas the residents of the city of Hamilton would benefit to greater access to 10 outdoor swimming pools during the summer, whereas providing free public swimming at all 10 outdoor swimming pools all summer would provide the residents of the city of Hamilton greater access to recreational opportunities and whereas councillor Aidan Johnson moved a motion at city council on July 8th, 2016, to keep Coronation Outdoor Swimming Pool open between the hours of 4:00 PM and 5:00 as a pilot for the remainder of the 2006 season. Therefore, be it resolved, the staff be directed to report back to Emergency and Community Services Committee with options of extending the operating hours of outdoor swimming pools and providing free admission to all public swims during the summer season. Now, Mr Deputy Mayor, I think the crux of this particular issue is really twofold. One, and most importantly, I want to look at this from a lens of a public health issue as opposed to a recreation issue. So this year may be an anomaly as it pertains to the weather that we experience, the hottest on record, or it may not be, but I think it's important that we recognize that not everybody has access to cooling stations or a cooling environment. Years ago, I can recall when we used to, through announcements, encourage people to access the Centre Mall, as an example, as a cooling avenue. And that's probably why the Centre Mall demold, because they were in the business of providing cooling stations, but they're not in the business of providing cooling stations. But having said that, it is an important issue and one that does play a role in public health. The medical officer of health alerts through heat alerts and as a direct result of that, there is a, there's a mobility of social agencies that are active or activated once that heat alert is called and to try to protect the most vulnerable. The most vulnerable in these conditions would be seniors and those that are frail, obviously, but having said that, there are a lot of young children who live in small quarters, whether that be a small apartment, particularly if it's elevated high and so on, where the heat compounds itself based on the fact that firstly, it's a small quarter, secondly, it's high up and as a direct result of that, there are a number of public health issues that are connected with that. So really, what I'd like to see is when there's a heat alert called, that the pools are basically free and that the hours are extended, but also that it correlates with the heat alert as opposed to a season, which doesn't seem to coincide with the heat alerts that we're having. As you can recall, this year, which led to councillor Johnson's motion, the first heat alert we received, we had was in June, so our pools weren't open, there was a public outcry and we really were left without an answer to this particular dilemma. So what I'd like to see is a system in place where, when a heat alert is called through the medical officer of health, that in coordination with our rec department, we would have the pools open at that time, whether it be earlier or later in the season, as it is today, our pools are closed and today is 40-degree day, which is a perfect example of why we should have these extended seasons in order to accommodate. The danger of that, however, is if this year wasn't, isn't going to be consistently, or sorry, if future years aren't consistent with this year, there might be times when, in September, and I can recall, that the temperatures could be 12 or 13 degrees and people are wondering why the pools are open in June or open in September. So we do have to find a balance of what our climate issues are and how it's changing, how this is a public health issue can be incorporated, not as a rec scenario, but a public health issue, into our heat alert system and how and what the cost would be in order to provide that. So that's ideally would be the best, well, the first request. The best-case scenario from my perspective is to have it free all year round. I'm not sure if that's feasible financially, but I'd like to find out what that cost is and this report is asking for that feasibility study to be returned back to community and social services at a later date. So as it stands, that's basically the motion. I think it does, hopefully I addressed the two envelopes I'd like to deal with, the first being, and more importantly, the public health component and the access to a cooling station if this type of weather continues in future years and I appreciate the time.
Thoroughly explained. Seconded by councillor Aidan Johnson. Thanks councillor Marula. Councillor Ferguson, please.
Just two questions. First to the mover, would it make more sense to just go back to public health rather than community emergency services? Because I agree with you, it's a public health issue and then would how all council be able to take a look at it?
I have no problem with that request and actually, on that front, I prefer that because public health is partly funded by the province, so I like to get money out of them. So that's actually a great idea.
So you'll move, you'll change it then to report back to public health?
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Thank you. And the second, I see Chris Stock's in the audience, I wonder, Chris, if you could just come down for a second.
Director Hurstick, filling in for Divisional Director Brown. Chris, welcome.
Chris, I know our pools do, as councillor Marula mentioned, traditionally close Labor Day and yesterday we had a humid ex of 40 degrees Celsius and I was out last night and it was humid and hot and today's supposed to be hotter. Are our pools closed or do you see the forecast and keep them open for a few more days? Chris?
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Our outdoor pools are closed. We do close on Labor Day. We do have a set season. It is a budgetary season, but it also is complicated because our lifeguards are mostly college students and high school students, so they are returning to school, so we're at a deficit of lifeguards at this time.
So you can't keep them open after school? That's the hottest time of day at 4 o'clock in the afternoon or has the water been drained out of them and they're done?
The water hasn't been drained out of them. We have been routing the residents to our indoor pools. All our indoor pools through a heat alert are free as well, so all the public swims are free, so we've been sending people to our indoor pools.
So during heat alerts, are our outdoor pools also free?
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. That is correct. They're free.
All of them or just the one pilot?
No, they're all free.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Thanks councillor Ferguson. Councillor Brenda Johnson?
Yep, thank you, and that was, one question I had was during heat warnings that they are free. My understanding as well was that the splash pads and the operational hours for the splash pads, because we don't open them up until the end of June, so a lot of us that don't have outdoor pools, a lot of us that don't have rec centers rely on those splash pads to cool the residents down. So I don't know if Chris is, can answer this question. The big question now that my community is asking is, when do we close the splash pads? Because given the heat right now, they're not interested in seeing an empty or a dry splash pad. So do you have any information as to when these get winterized and they're shut down for the rest of the season?
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I believe at Public Works Committee this week, there's a report coming to extend the splash pads earlier in the season and later in the seasons to cover the heat alert seasons.
Thank you, and that was my concern. Thank you, I'm prepared to support.
Thank you councillor Brenda Johnson. So councillor Marula, with the amendment of reporting to Board of Health instead of ECS, seconded by councillor Aidan Johnson. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Councillor Collins, you have a notice of motion regarding the regala of tall ships.
I do and it's, I need a notice, sorry, I need a motion to waive the rules first and it's seconded by Mayor Eisenberger.
Seconded by Mayor Eisenberger. All in favor of waiving the rules? Oh, on waiving the rules? Oh, second, okay, all in favor, carry. Councillor Collins, put your motion, please.
Yeah, and the motion is fairly straightforward. This was sort of an 11th hour request from staff and it was sent to members of the waterfront subcommittee and I offered to bring it forward. It essentially mirrors the past motion that we had in 213 that gave direction for staff to organize the regatta here in Hamilton and of course, going back to the 1980s, we had our first successful tall ship event here in Hamilton and then in 213, another successful event. I think the motion is straightforward, I believe Anna is here to answer any questions and I just want to note that, you know, it is a significant investment, but the last time we directed our staff to do this in 213, they actually raised more private funding than was required. Anna anticipates the same, I'm fully comfortable with this. These events have done tremendous things for the waterfront and the image of our city. They bring people from all over southern Ontario and I know that everyone who attended in 213, including myself, had a terrific time and it was a real showcase for the waterfront. So I have no problem moving this and it's seconded by Mayor Eisenberger as well.
Thanks so much councillor Collins. It was enormously popular when I was here four years ago. Councillor Skelly, please, on this matter.
Just one quick question. Will all of the slips be, I don't even know the status now, but will they be ready in time for this?
Anna, please.
Through the chair. So I have been working with Chris Phillips and Gavin Norman and Werner Plessel regarding where the ships would dock and there does not appear to be any issue with it. There is going to be some construction going on at that time, but not where the ships would be docked. And we also talked about using it as an opportunity to highlight what's happening with the waterfront redevelopment.
Okay, thanks councillor Skelly. Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. General information, item 11 and other business. If I could do the general information first, councillor Green, and then get you, is it other business?
Exactly.
Or is it one of the general information items to remove or to? Thank you. Okay, general information items, 11.1 AMB, proposed new dates and to remove. Moved by councillor Whitehead, seconded by councillor Farr. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Now to other business. Councillor Green, your time.
Thank you very much, Mr Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Bridget, Anna and Anne Lemains for a fantastic event that we hosted at Gage Park, the tragically hip concert, which, as you know, hosted close to 15,000 people in what I think to be a nationwide cultural event shared by a third of the population, Mr Deputy Mayor, and I wanted to take that time. I know that Bridgette got away for the summer there, I would have acknowledged her closer to the date, but having had staff, both Anna and Anne Lemains were on-site, as was myself, to witness what was an absolute incredible evening and certainly couldn't have done it without the private sector partners and people who came in, Soundbox, audiovisual, Clear Cable, providing a great flamboyant business, providing the wifi access, midsummer's dream and of course, our very own Hamilton Police Services who were there to make sure that everybody was safe. You know, when you bring that many people together, anything could happen, but it was very much a cathartic event and would not have been possible without the great work of our staff and I just wanted to highlight that here today with the staff present and appreciate your indulgence on that, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Tremendous recognition, councillor Green. Councillor Whitehead, on this matter?
No.
Or a different matter? Okay, on that matter, councillor Marula.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to thank councillor Green on that initiative and there's another example though, I must say, based on the other issue we had, where it was paid for out of a ward-specific budget, but yet it was a citywide event that was enjoyed by everyone from every part of the city. So I thought that was unfair as well and if anything, that should be reversed, but I'm not going to try that again today.
I just had a feeling you'd dig up that bone again, councillor Marula. Thank you though, for reminding us. Thank you. Councillor Whitehead, on a different matter, other business.
Yeah, well, I want to congratulate Gilkson Community Organization, a neighborhood organization. They had their Super Saturday, I attended, had a movie night, well-attended and all the volunteers that have helped make that program a success. I would do, I would like to highlight though, that there are challenges with volunteers for that organization, for coaches and conveners, so I'd hope that, understanding that to make these things work, you need people to stand up and come to the plate. And I also have some concerns and that is that there seems to be, I would call it for-profit, but I don't know if they're actually for-profit, but there are other organizations, in fact, there was an individual that, I think is with the soccer world, got involved with the Gilkson, took a lot of the data and information and started their own soccer program and that was competing and having some impact on what has been a very successful program for years and the reason why it's successful is because not only are they providing an amenity and a sport for the kids and they've gone in collaboration with Gorley Community Organization and they share resources, so the baseball is taken care of by Gorley and Gilkson takes care of the soccer program and it's very convenient in the neighborhood. But the concern is, is that when these other organizations come in, they start stripping some of those resources and creating a competing interest, they don't put money back into the community. Gilkson and Gorley do. The money and revenues and additional revenues they may generate from those programs, they have Christmas programs that they buy Christmas baskets and so forth, we're unprivileged. They host another, a number of other type of community events to really improve the quality of life in the neighborhood. What concerns me, and I don't, maybe that's a question I'm going to have to sit down with staff, you've got these new organizations that come in here and see an opportunity to make money and they provide a program and the program I'm not going to criticize, but the money is not going back into the neighborhoods and so it's created an undercurrent which is concerning for me in regards to some of the quality of programming that's taking place in Ward 8 and I would look forward to looking and working with staff on that. And my last piece, Mr Deputy Mayor, is the, as you know, this is back-to-school week. So far, as I understand, it's been moving fairly successfully, again, reminding a lot of the parents and those that drive cars that, you know, kids are accessing schools, of the parents and those that drive cars that, you know, kids are accessing schools, so be conscious of that. And there has been, and I don't know if this is an anomaly or if this is just traditional